Good afternoon and welcome to today's board business meeting on this day, Tuesday, October 8, 2019. If we could all rise for the cudge of allegiance.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I can get approval of the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved in second and all those in favor? And that is unanimous. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Good afternoon. Today we bring before you the monthly Human Resources and Development Report for your consideration.
May I have approval? Second. It's been moved in second and all in favor? And that is unanimous.
We also need to pause today and remember two of our employees who have passed away. The death on August 24th, 2019 of Mr. Donald Herbert, special education teacher at Francis Scott Key Middle School saddened the staff, students, and members of the Board of Education. During the year that Mr. Herbert worked for Montgomery County Public Schools, he was a dedicated educator who encouraged his students to challenge themselves and instilled within them a willingness to learn and persevere. Mr. Herbert was a strong advocate for his students' needs and worked diligently with his team members, school staff, parents, and guardians to ensure his students had the tools they needed to be successful. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education, the superintendent of schools, express their sorrow at the death of Mr. Herbert and extend deepest sympathy to his family.
May I have approval?
Second.
All in favor? And that is unanimous.
We also want to pause today and remember Mrs. Amanda G. Brown. The death on September 1st, 2019 of Ms. Brown, special education paraeducator at John F. Kennedy High School deeply saddened the staff, students, and members of the Board. During the 17.6 years that Ms. Brown worked for Montgomery County Public Schools, she was deeply committed to creating a safe and positive learning environment for all students. Ms. Brown was dependable, reliable, and trustworthy in her role at John F. Kennedy High School. She always was willing to assist whether a team member asked for her support or if it was necessary to provide a student with additional instruction. She treated all staff and all students with kindness and respect. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools express their sorrow at the death of Ms. Brown and extend deepest sympathy to her family.
May I have approval?
Second.
All in favor? And that is unanimous. Our next item on the national--
I'm sorry.
Yes. Yes, National School.
So today we have National School Bus Safety Week. The week of October 21st to 25th, 2019 has been designated as National School Bus Safety Week. School bus transportation is more than a ride to and from school, it is access to education. School buses are widely recognized as the safest form of ground transportation, and each student riding up a school bus should have a safe and secure environment that sets a positive tone for the day to foster a high level of learning and success. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education proclaim the week of October 21st to 25th, 2019 as National School Bus Safety Week.
May I have approval?
Second.
It's been moved in second and all those in favor? And that is unanimous. Ms. O'Neill?
Yes, I just have a comment. Recently, I was on Old Georgetown Road near Woodmont Avenue, and it was late afternoon, and one of our buses put on its flashing lights in the right-hand lane, and I was about two cars behind the school bus and two cars past the bus with the stoplights and with the, you know, and I was just horrified. And I realize it's a $250 fine, but, you know, it's kind of hard to miss that big yellow thing, especially with the lights flashing. And I don't know what these drivers were thinking, but they certainly weren't thinking about student safety. So, I mean, I think last year it was like 54,000 people passed stopped school buses in Montgomery County, and I just urge everyone, please pay attention. Someone's child's life depends on it.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Neill. The next item on our agenda is public comments. Public comments is one of our opportunities to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. Board members will take your comments into consideration, but it is not our practice to take action at this time on issues that are raised. We encourage public input on policy, program, and practices. This is not the proper avenue to address specific student or employee matters, so we encourage everyone to utilize existing avenues of redress for complaints. This is a public meeting, and we expect the conduct of all speakers and members of the audience to be within the bounds of proper etiquette. Inappropriate personal remarks, rude retorts, or other such behavior is out of order and will not be tolerated. Please check our website for information about upcoming board meetings, hearings, and work sessions, including any changes to our meeting start times. Each speaker will receive three minutes for comments. Please speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Thirty seconds prior to the expiration of a speaker's time, a yellow light will go on accompanied by a beep. A red light and a buzzer signals that your time has expired. Please push the button on the microphone to begin speaking and push it once again at the sound of the buzzer. We ask speakers to be respectful of all who have signed up to testify by adhering to the time limits and stopping their testimony when the buzzer sounds. If possible, we ask that you remain in the room in case board members have comments to make or questions to ask. If you have not done so already, please provide copies of your testimony to staff before sitting down. And at this time, I would like to call to the table Nicole Bales, Deborah Jacobs, Ray Mensah, and Dan Wallace. You can sit in any of the seats. Yeah. Hi. So we'll go in the order that I called you. I first start off with Nicole. Yes, just push the button right in front of you.
Good afternoon, Board of Education President Shippra Evans, Board of Education members, and Dr. Smith. My name is Nicole Bales, and I am the president of the PTA at South Lake Elementary School. My daughter Lucy is in the fourth grade. To understand my connection to South Lake, you should understand my family's connection to Montgomery County Public Schools. My grandmother attended the Boys Negro School, which operated from 1896 to 1936, to serve my people in a one-room structure. My aunts and uncles attended Carver High School, and I went to Harmony Hills Elementary School. So the history of MCPS is my family's history. My family loves Montgomery County Public Schools, we love our school system, but I need my school system to work for children like Lucy. So I've done my homework and I've looked through the key facility indicators. On the ADA accessibility, the doors into and out of the all-purpose room at South Lake are too narrow, so if Lucy were in a wheelchair, she would have trouble getting to lunch. On issues related to life safety, as well as ADA compliance, our health room, which is supposed to serve, which serves 890 students, should only serve, it's in a 200 square foot, where, 200 square foot space. That means if Lucy were to have heat stroke, as she did this summer because the HVAC system was not working, and if the heat stroke coincided with her fellow student receiving their daily insulin injections, there would be no space for Lucy. On issues of the size and shape of teaching spaces, it's almost comical, the shapes of our classrooms. Instead of your standard square, the classrooms are trapezoidal or triangular, which makes facing the Promethean Board a challenge. Last February and again in March, South Lake parents met with the county council members about the CIP budget, and the council allocated 120 million to school renovations. And I understand that 120 million is insufficient to begin renovation of all nine identified schools, but I want to emphasize, one, that South Lake and Burnt Mills are the only two Title I schools on the list. And South Lake and Burnt Mills were previously on the list for renovations before the new KFI process was rolled out, but were overlooked even while construction on schools like Defoe proceeded. Every child, and I mean every child in our school system, deserves to study in a building that allows him and her every chance to achieve greatness. South Lake is like a garden, you can't tell because of the building, but inside, the walls and the teachers, the walls are teachers who love and nurture all children. I know we can work together to do better for our staff and our children. So I just wanted to ask Dr. Smith, on behalf of South Lake PTA and AIM, I would love to request a meeting with you before the end of this month. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from Deborah Jacobs.
Good afternoon. In 2010, my son was in fourth grade at Beverly Farms Elementary School. I remember my reaction when I first heard that the school was going to be torn down and rebuilt. I was surprised and a bit confused. Sure, there were a couple of portables out back, but it seemed spacious, clean, and at least to me, to be in good shape. I shrugged and concluded that it was great to live in a county that cares so much about education and has such ample tax revenue, that they can rebuild schools just to modernize them to ensure our kids have state-of-the-art facilities. I have never minded paying taxes in Montgomery County because I see where the tax dollars go. I still feel this way. However, I now know that there are at least two schools, elementary schools, South Lake and Burnt Mills, where new construction is not a matter of modernization. Instead, it is a question of abject need for the physical safety, medical, social, emotional, and basic educational needs of more than 1,000 children. There have been extensive testimony about how South Lake measures against the KPIs. However, how schools on the CIP measure against schools that this board has already torn down and rebuilt should also be relevant. It was only after I began volunteering at South Lake Elementary that I learned that Beverly Farms was most certainly not slated for reconstruction because it was the school most in need of a new building. I am not going to speculate about why Beverly Farms, Wayside, Potomac Elementary, and Defoe Mills were chosen ahead of South Lake and Burnt Mills for new construction. In the absence of public written opinions by this body in support of the decisions it reaches, it is though easy to claim that the school system gave preferential treatment to wealthier parents. I have no way of knowing if this is the case. It is convenient but woefully unacceptable for this board and the county council to recite platitudes about how the tax revenue pie is not large enough to do all that needs to be done. We are tired also of the runaround between the Board of Education and the county council, who each agree in our presence about the need, but then defer to the other about the decision. It is time for you, the Board of Education, to step up and fulfill your responsibility to these children and to the teachers and staff who work tirelessly on their behalf. You are elected to be their advocates and the guarantors of their education. The only reason South Lake and Burnt Mills parents should have to return here yet again next year is to say thank you.
Thank you. Ray Mensah?
Good afternoon, Dr. Smith and President Evans, and members of the Montgomery County Board of Education. I'm coming to you this afternoon as a concerned community resident, parent, and local business owner in the Burnt Mills community for almost 20 years. I'm a proud parent of three children, all of whom have attended Burnt Mills Elementary School. My oldest daughter started her education at Burnt Mills at the age of some 10 years ago. I've had the opportunity to be involved in the school community for that period of time. I currently have my son enrolled in Burnt Mills, and I've also had an amazing experience with the faculty and staff, and appreciate the leadership of Dr. Ashton, the current principal. However, the school facilities are challenged by current conditions of the school and overcrowding. We currently have nine portables at the school, and my son is in one of them currently. The portables do present a safety issue when kids have to go to the bathroom and get to the main building. The school is currently over capacity by 50%. In the past, I understand that monies were allocated with ties to housing developments within the county. Over the last 20 years or more, there have been limited housing development in the Burnt Mills White Oak community by rising populations of residents. Burnt Mills Elementary has a three-hour lunchtime because of capacity issues within the school. This especially affects many of our students who are on free and reduced lunch. Most of us don't have lunch at 2:00 PM because our lunchroom is full. The bathrooms are overcrowded with some 200, 200 students using only one bathroom at a time, and that has caused issues with plumbing issues in the past. Burnt Mills currently does not have central air conditioning, and window units are so old that parts are no longer can be ordered. We keep plugging holes when we have a tsunami of students coming to Burnt Mills and South Lake Elementary School. Many of our students are currently immigrant families. We can all go back to a few generations ago of our own history and understand that where we have all come from. And I thank God that I've been able to be blessed to go to Montgomery County Schools and graduate at Wheaton High School, and be able to go to George Washington University on a full scholarship because of Montgomery County Schools. I was also a student with free and reduced lunch. My wife, who's currently a CPA and works for Marriott, was also a student with free and reduced lunch. I'm grateful for the opportunity that we have here, but my hope is that we take this opportunity to rebalance the equity within the school system. My ask is for you to make a choice and decide to put Burnt Mills in the upcoming 2020 budget for a new school that meets the projected student population so that the future of our next generation will be bright.
Thank you. And Dan Wallace?
Good afternoon, I'm Dan Wallace, Chair of the Burnt Mills Citizens Association Education Support Committee. First, on behalf of our community, I want to thank you all for all of the really good work you've been doing on behalf of our schools. We especially appreciate the adoption of policy FAA introducing demographics as a critical factor in prioritizing school construction. Such challenges at Burnt Mills motivated our residents to submit individual statements supporting policy FAA, 45 out of a total of 78 written comments. We are highly committed to the success of our school. We are gratified to see that Burnt Mills in the July CIP amendments is still positioned for planning and design due to the major capital project program, even though their program was cut by $5 million bucks. Before this, we felt uneasy at the delay in planning and design, which was announced for spring. We'd been disappointed before. In 2013, we had a completed feasibility study, we were ready to go for construction funds, and a fiscal drop in '16 included Burnt Mills out. Instead, we were consigned to the limbo of a future CIP to be determined. We are still in that limbo. We understand that the new countywide boundary studies today delayed the planning and design, and we only ask that we are fully informed and included in this process when scheduled. And since current forecasts that the 392-seat Burnt Mills facility are supposed to soar to 668 by 2025, we are in full support of the initial proposal of a standalone 750-seat facility. The plan is reinforced by pending development in the Northeast County of three projects that promise to add 6,600 residences to our area. Now, this isn't going to affect Burnt Mills immediately, probably because of the boundary studies. Back in 2006, we had the same issue. We had 546 students, and they were able to redistribute them to Crest Haven and New School '16, which was Roscoe and Nix. If you look at the CIP today, you see that both of those schools have their own capacity limit problems. So this is not an option anymore, so the 750-seat facility seems even more pressing. We also urge you to continue this momentum when you take up construction funding in the near future. Personal note, my children went to Burnt Mills two decades ago. Same building, same problems. My daughter now fundraises and creates libraries in Memphis City Schools because of Burnt Mills. I volunteered for three years. I love the kids, they're brilliant. My daughter now fundraises and creates libraries in Memphis City Schools because of Burnt Mills. I volunteered for three years. I love the kids, they're brilliant, and my hope for them is that they can look forward to rewarding futures, including South Lake's of their own, just like every other school in Montgomery County Schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Mrs. Sivestra?
Dr. Smith, we, could you help us understand the change in how we decide which schools, the KFI's, and how that addressed maybe some of the issues that were brought up in terms of certain schools getting rebuilt when there's really need countywide?
Sure. Historically, the system was a linear queue of schools, and that line of schools was done by year, so if school was delayed, then all the schools in a later year were delayed behind it. When I walked in the door in July 2016, we were about six months into a process that resulted in the key facility indicators, which looks at schools more specifically and more holistically. While that sounds like a contradiction, it's not. One of the things that happened with the queue was that it was constantly being interrupted for capacity projects where there was growth. And so it meant that schools like South Lake and Burnt Mills, both of which I've visited, and nothing you've said today is overstated at all about the need, nothing, kept getting pushed back. So rather than having a linear, single line of schools, we now put forth sets of schools, and both of these schools are in the set that the board put forth last year. And as we come upon the end of October, and we will arrange a meeting with the principal and the PTA president of South Lake, I always like to go to South Lake, so that's good. The major capital projects will result in a set of schools being identified for funding for either renovation or replacement. And oftentimes, replacement actually becomes a more financially sound decision than renovation because for those of in our community who've ever renovated an old house, oftentimes it costs twice what it would build to build a new house in terms of the cost, as well as all the energy savings and things like that. So in a couple of weeks, we'll be releasing about the 24th or 25th of October, my recommendations to the board, they will take those, we'll have some public hearings, and then the board will make a decision by the first of December about what to forward to the county government. I think the key this year is going to be that the county government is going to have to really look at that list and understand that these recommendations are based on very solid information about very real need. And so that's been the big shift from a very linear queue of single schools. The other thing that's changed that, and as I said, this is my fourth year here, so I don't have long history, but I am a student of history, so I've studied what's happened in Montgomery County. In the 1990s, up to four schools a year could be done financially in renovation or replacement. Part of the reason for that is because in the late '70s and all through the '80s, the system closed over 60 schools. So that meant that the most, the schools in most dire need were closed because of falling enrollment. Then the enrollment has shot back up in the 2000s, and this year we have a higher growth than we've had in any of my years here so far at 2,700 students. So the need is very real, both to renovate and replace and to build for capacity, but we have to balance that. It cannot just be capacity because we get far behind then in our renovations and our replacement of some of the schools that have been serving the system very well for many years and for many generations, but must be replaced now if we're going to serve our students well. So I appreciate your comments today and find them to be an accurate representation of what I personally have found at both of those schools.
Thank you all for coming today and giving comments. We appreciate it. At this time, oh, okay, so I don't have her name, so maybe your name is going to be who I'm going to announce next. Adori, yeah, so that you're the next set of panelists. Thank you. So we have, we're asked to come to the table, Adori Benicourt, who's already here, Patricia Carey, Kevin, and Kevin Humphries.
Good afternoon, Board of Education, President Evans, Board of Education members, and Superintendent Smith. My name is Adori Benicourt, and I'm a proud parent at South Lake Elementary School. My son is in the first grade. You heard from my fellow parents at the last general meeting and today about some of the deficits at South Lake, including the tiny health room. Thank you to the MCPS staff who came to our school and to Burnt Mills last week after we gave testimony. It gives me hope that we can work together. What I want to impress on you today is that temporary fixes have led to serious challenges, sometimes compounding the original stressors. What I want to impress on you today is that we need to engage together in a thoughtful process in which the facility is examined holistically instead of as a checkbox. The compliance exercise, part of the reason why we don't have an awning in front of the school where parents and children can wait in inclement weather is because the school had originally been conceived as a county office space. It's also why many of our classrooms are triangular with floor-to-ceiling pipes that run through the middle of the classroom. Part of the reason why our bathrooms are insufficient is because we have 10 portables, nine of which serve as classrooms. And designers did not think through the footprint and impact on existing supporting infrastructure. As a result, one, children have to wait a long time to use the bathroom. Two, the plumbing is prone to failure from overuse, and on certain days, you can smell the stench coming from the bathrooms. Part of the reason why our children and parents were hit by cars is because there's insufficient parking for staff, and so parents have to cross a blind turn. In the middle, we have to park across in the street at the shopping center and cross a blind turn on Contour Road. We are making do with what we have, but please, no more Band-Aid solutions. The existing infrastructure can't support us anymore and hasn't been able to support us for a while. Form has to fit function. Despite the challenges, there is a spirit in our school. We have outstanding staff, staff who are there because they want to be there. And we have an immensely diverse parent body that is ready, willing, and organized. Through action in Montgomery, we have relationships with neighboring institutions who support us. We want to imagine with you what could be done at South Lake so that it becomes the nationwide example of what a community school should be. This is true both of South Lake and Burnt Mills. The county has approved the allocation of $120 million towards school construction. It's now your job to schedule the schools where you prioritize South Lake and Burnt Mills. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Patricia Carey?
Good afternoon, Dr. Smith and the Board of Education, and thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Patricia Carey, and I'm here to testify on behalf of Burnt Mills Elementary School and also to support South Lake Elementary. Long before, I was a nurse or a mother or a PTA board member. I was a Peace Corps volunteer in Kenya. My local community, a small village on the foothills of Mount Kenya, invited me to work with their counterparts on improving agroforestry practices. After being welcomed and accepted in the community, I was also able to work with schools to help procure resources to build a library and a science lab. My experience in Kenya taught me the value and importance of belonging to a community, assessing its needs, and working together towards a goal. When I returned to the United States, I settled in Montgomery County for several reasons, including the rich cultural diversity, a highly reputable school system, and the opportunities for academic and professional experience for not only me, but for the next generation. I am proud that my three children are enrolled in Burnt Mills Spanish immersion program and happy that they're learning a second language while being immersed in a culturally diverse school setting. There's an African proverb, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, that says, "It takes a village to raise a child." We, the Burnt Mills community, are working hard as a village to advocate on behalf of Burnt Mills. Our parents, students, and community members have attended and testified at numerous board meetings. Our school administrators, teachers, and staff work tirelessly to make our school shine with fresh paint, to glow with optimism and mindfulness, and create an inviting space for our students to learn. But behind the fresh paint and smiling faces, there are structural and functional deficits that impede our ability to support student wellness and their readiness to learn. Many of you, the Board of Education members, have visited Burnt Mills in the past couple of years, and we thank you for attending our PTA meetings and listening to our concerns. And Dr. Smith, I know you just recently visited Burnt Mills, and I'm sure that you saw that our school facility is simply too small and inadequate to accommodate our growing population in East County. We are overcapacity by at least 200 students and currently have nine portables, making us one of the most overcrowded schools in the Northeast Consortium. 200 students need to use just two bathrooms with old and overtaxed plumbing. We have an old HVAC system and window air conditioning units that are loud, inefficient, and also leak. The school has six lunch periods to accommodate all of the students from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. We are not ADA compliant. We also, the Choice Study identified interest in expanding the Spanish immersion program, but our school is simply too small to accommodate that, and the list of challenges goes on and on. I'm here today, along with my fellow school and community members, to urge you to allocate the necessary funds for a new school building for Burnt Mills, a Title I school. We need your investment to create a new, safe, and nurturing environment for our students. We need your help so that our community can raise children who are ready to learn, thrive, and lead Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Humphries?
Hi, Kevin Humphries, a parent of two children at Farmland Elementary, and first I'd like to say thank you. I have two boys, nine years old, fourth grade. You know what they're like. We have some signs up there. I got a sitting ovation from that crowd. But, you know, the other day, my kids went out the garage door, out through the garage, went to the park. I came home, opened my garage door, and the door to the garage into the house was left unlocked. Typical nine-year-old boys, you know, leave the door open, they don't know it. Thank goodness, there was a garage door. Why don't I tell this story? Well, I'm here because parting, you can all relate to, I'm here part of fences for Farmland. I represent a lot of parents and students from Farmland. We have four new portables. I know it's not as big as some of the other schools with problems, but they just were launched on us this summer and we're using them. And the security for those portables are my nine-year-old sons, who are the ones that have to make sure the doors are closed, that the doors are locked, that go back and forth between the school and the portables. That's just not acceptable. I love my kids, they're smart, but they're nine, and they can't close a door all the time. You know, we have security cameras that are being installed very shortly. They can be defeated by someone wearing a hoodie. That doesn't do anything, it doesn't prevent anything from happening at the school. Great, you've bought some cameras for us. We appreciate it, but it doesn't stop the problem. I'm sure you've read lots of studies and you know lots of numbers. I have a few numbers. 25, 7, 5, 3, 8, and 45. There'll be tests on this later. 25 strides from the curb, the parking lot, to the steps, to the portables, the very welcoming steps that are open in front of our school. Seven, sorry, yeah, seven, that's how long it takes in seconds, less than seven seconds to quickly jog up to those steps. Five are the number of steps. Three are the number of feet from the steps to the first door of the portable. Eight are the number of doors that are, my kids are supposed to open, close, and make sure are locked. Forty-five, the number of minutes the teachers were given as security training. That's it. That's our security for our portables at Farmland Elementary. Some cameras that are coming in, which why are they coming in so late? I do not know. But so we would like to petition to have fences built for Farmland Elementary portables.
Thank you, Mr. Humphries. So at this time, Ms. Sivestra, you're late.
Dr. Smith, could you talk a little bit about fencing, if we're exploring that, or what feasibility?
We have been looking at fencing over the last few years. Clearly, it's built some places because it's been necessary as the school's been renovated or has been added, but it has not been a typical part of MCPS's efforts over many years, according to the information I've been provided. And it is a competing interest with all of the other efforts in capital improvements and in construction. And it is also a widespread, you know, a widespread issue in terms of having portable classrooms. We have almost 400 portable classrooms in the system across potentially 208 schools, and so we'll continue to work on that and look at it. And, you know, certainly, I'll follow up with my staff about Farmland and see what the issues are there, and we'll just keep working through the process of taking a look at things and considering it and then moving forward in the areas where we can.
Mrs. O'Neil?
At one point in time, on the issue of fencing around portables, it was my understanding, and it came about at Potomac Elementary specifically, that the fire marshal wanted or demanded that children be able to flee from the portables. And has that changed as a requirement, or is it just strictly on a case-by-case basis? It also involved the awnings around portables, I mean, you know, so that fire trucks could easily access portables, but mainly it was that children needed to be able to flee. And so I understand totally, you know, we want to protect our children from intruders, but, you know, there's also the need. So I just, I raised that question. You know, the fire marshal was pretty strict about it with us before.
The fire marshal has not changed the rules around fencing, and it's on a case-by-case basis, and it has to do with egress and access and getting fire equipment in there. So that's one of the things that we have to look at, one of the tests we do in each school when we're considering fencing, or there's a request for us to take a look at fencing.
Ms. Wolf?
I just wanted to thank you for your advocacy. I have visited both South Lake and Burnt Mills and completely agree with your assessment about both. I am cognizant that Dr. Smith did say we are not necessarily looking at quick fixes anymore because, as you know, sometimes it is just cheaper to tear the school down and start over. And to Mr. Humphries, I've visited some schools that I've been concerned about the fencing around it, too. So I'm sure that Dr. Smith and his staff will take a look at this, and we will be back with you. Thank you.
Dr. Daca?
I wanted to thank all of the people who came out to testify, but it looks like South Lakes have moved on, but, and I like the fact that Burnt Mills and South Lakes are supporting each other. And your concern about the fencing, I had always heard that we had a problem with the fire department about what we wanted to do and what they would allow us to do, but you should be involved in the deliberation on that so that you'll know what the concerns are there. And Ms. Bayless, I think that's how she said she pronounced her name, I'm going to be talking a little bit later about Boyd's and the colored schools and her family, I don't know what her family name is, but I will be talking about some families that have been here for a very long time in Gaithersburg. And the Boyd's school is now called Edward U. Taylor. It was named for the last superintendent of the colored schools in Montgomery County.
Thank you. So once again, we thank you all for coming today to give public comments. At this time, our next item of the agenda is item six, board comments, and we will start with Mrs. Smundrowski. Okay, Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes, in this morning, this Washington Post is an article about the Nobel Prize winners that were announced yesterday in physiology and medicine, and one of them is from Johns Hopkins, I think it's Dr. Simosa is how it's pronounced, I'm not quite sure. But he, I point this out because in his remarks yesterday, he mentioned that his inspiration for his life's work began in high school with a science teacher named Rose Taylor, and she's since deceased. But he said he really needed to pay tribute to her because she inspired him and others in his class and behind every great person, our teachers. So we thank our teachers who inspire students daily, and I thought that was such a nice tribute. I'm not sure how I would react if I was a Nobel winner, but that was very nice. Recently, Dr. Daca and I attended the Identity 20th Anniversary Celebration, and Candace Kader, who is one of the founders, was recognized and honored. And she's, it was quite, it was an amazing celebration, so well-attended, and she had some... some particularly touching stories about folks that Identity has worked with and why they, and how they came to the United States. It brought people to tears. So we congratulate Identity on 20 years of working with MCPS, and they're a valued partner, and they'll be one of the sponsors of the Black and Brown Coalition next week, I think it's the 15th. Also, Dr. Daca and I attended the Superintendent's Breakfast, which was sponsored by the MCPS Educational Foundation. David Valdez, the president and CEO of Pepco Holdings, was the speaker. And he was very engaging, he had quite a compelling life story, he's the first generation in his family to go to college. And he talked about the difficulties of navigating his way to college. He became an electrical engineer and then through a variety of mentors, and number-one mentor in his life, he said, was his wife, you know, moved and rose through the ranks of Pepco. Our students were absolutely wonderful and so engaging, so thoughtful in their questions with him. And at every table were leaders, in the business leaders, STEM leaders, the Montgomery Medical Society, and others. So we thank everyone who participated, and most of all, our students. We were at a table with two students from RICA who are AP students, and they, it was wonderful. And Saturday, MCA, as part of their leadership forum, had a meeting on Saturday morning about Kerwin and the big rocks, the big ideas from Kerwin. There were a lot of elected officials, parents, League of Women Voters, Progressive Maryland that participated in the tabletop discussions. And so, and I think November 6th, there is a forum at Montgomery Blair High School in the evening in the cafeteria that will continue to build on the conversations of Kerwin and the blueprint for the future of education in Montgomery County and Maryland.
Thank you. Dr. Daca.
Okay. I just wanted to say something a little bit about Hispanic Heritage Month before I go on. We had some pioneers in this county who were principals and in other positions in the county. For one, one person is Maria Monticera, Juan Carthanas, just emailed me her name. I couldn't remember it, but she was a longtime principal at New Hampshire State, very much beloved. And they really were very sad when she retired. She was such a groundbreaker. And we have other people whose names are, are related to the community, and since we don't have a huge number, or didn't have a huge number, of persons who were Latino, I'm going to mention them. Nivea Barrios, who headed up ESOL, Betty Knight Morgan, who was the director here after being a principal. And of course, we have Dr. Navarro, who is presently with us. Juan Carthanas, whom I just mentioned, he's the executive director in, downstairs, in Secu- yeah, Shared Accountability. Meredith Williams, I believe, is in Communication, is that the right name? Okay. Maria Montgomery, who was principal at Tacoma Park Middle School. And Jack Schoendorfer, I know, nobody knows that name, but you know, Pat, okay. He was in charge of technology when we had the department upstairs. He also had worked with me on Human Relations before that. And Alberto Relusco, and I doubt seriously if anybody remembers that, maybe not, okay. Alberto Relusco was the first Latino to work in the Department of Human Relations when they were beginning to put their files together and their programs together. Rosalva Alva was a principal here, as was Sally Macias. So those are the names that just came to mind right away, who were the, were the persons who really started us with Latino issues, and we started getting more and more students at that time. And I'm going to move from that to African-American students because I'm also wanting you to connect this to our Evidence of Learning, because we know that we're not happy with some of the scores that are there for African-American Latinos. And on Sunday, the 9th of September, I mean, October, Linda Farrell, who, not in the room right now, but Linda Farrell works for the superintendent and for Dr. Johnson, belongs to Goshen Church, which is in Gaithersburg. It used to be Stewarttown Church, in case any of you know about it. They had an education Sunday. And because of her, her personality and her steadfastness, lots of people came to this, this service. And I'm going to mention them because these are our staff members who gave up their Sunday from 10:00 in the morning until 1:30 to be with us to talk about education. Ms. Yolanda Allen, Ms. Leocati Bader, Ms. Sher- Mr. Sherwin Colette, Mrs. Lambs Dempsey, Ms. Cheryl Dyson, Mr. Jade Gilchrist, Dr. Darlene Harris, Ms. Nikki Hazel, Ms. Celeste King, principal, Dr. Keisha Logan, principal, Ms. Diane Morris, Mr. Shahid Muhammad, principal, and Ms. Rochelle Rubin, and Janet Wilson from Shared Accountability, and Ms. Danielle Wilson, Sadler. Also, the 1977-2 group, you know, we've talked about them before, and they had two careers they retired from, and they're still trying to work on, on the academics for our students. They were also present and received certification there. Odessa Shannon, Ruby Rubens, Chris Barclay, the Reverend Dr. Ruby Moon, Natalie Johnson, Lucy Hayes. And I hope I didn't miss anybody, but they were also in, there. And, you know, they have about 50 or more children who were brought up front, and they, they talked with the minister and talked with the audience. It was just really, really very heartwarming. And we know that they are concerned about education, and we appreciate them having that Sunday. And this Sunday, just yesterday, the Rotary Club of Gaithersburg, which is a satellite of the Montgomery Village Rotary Club. Greg Wims invited me to this. I almost didn't go, Sunday afternoon, 4:30, okay, but I did go. And Greg had been the leader for Rotary in the state of Maryland, the first African-American to do anything of that sort. I've forgotten what the title is, but he was traveling around Maryland, working with all of the Rotary Clubs. This breakfast, I mean, this dinner was in honor of C. Glenn Taylor, who is minister at Jerusalem Church. Do you all know where Jerusalem is? It's in Poolsville. And it's a very old church, and he's been there a long time. And he also was a 30-year employee, employee here in Montgomery County. He was an electrician here. And while I was there, you know, I've been here a long time, you all know that, and we, you know, I talk about the past a lot, but Mr. John Kelly was there. He was one of two African-American pupil personnel workers, one of the first two in the county. And his daughter was a teacher. His wife is the daughter of Edward U. Taylor. I mentioned him before, the last colored superintendent. So it's a family kind of thing, and they're related to C. Glenn Taylor, the minister. I didn't know they were all related. And Gaithersburg has produced quite a number of really interesting and accomplished people. Dr. Hiawatha Fountain was there, so I know many of you must have came out of Frederick to be with us that day. And I just wanted to also mention people in Montgomery County who were trailblazers for African-Americans. Edith Throckmorton, who was a teacher in the school system and a principal when it was a colored school, but when she was reassigned, she was not made a principal. This was after desegregation. And Nina Clark also, and Nina's still with us, she's about 95. She was a principal, and then she became an assistant principal, but she was reassigned as a principal in the integrated school system. She was the only one. And Rose, well, I'll get to Rose Kramer in a minute. This building, of course, had been the high school, and they were going to use this for Rockville, for the high school, for all the kids in Rockville. And Rose Kramer said, and Rose Kramer was county council member and also the wife of Sid Kramer, who was a longtime county executive and who saw her as a senator in the delegation. So they're devoted to public service, said that she was really happy about this school being used by everybody in Rockville. She thought they were just really liberal people and really understood about desegregation. Well, they said, no way. Our children are not sitting on those seats where black children have been. So it turns out that this building was made an administrative building, and they built Julius West. And I just thought this was really funny, that she said, okay, they got what they wanted, but that's the ugliest school that was ever built. So that's some of the history, and we were just talking about Julius West today, about the naming of that. Anyhow, I just wanted to, to mention some of those things in the history, because these are people who have been concerned about our kids and are still concerned about our kids, and I do think it has to do with Evidence of Learning. I also went to Watkins Mill High School yesterday for a music program that's provided by Music Nation, and they are going to high schools all over the country. They'll be going to Blair on Wednesday. But they provided all of these tents and those, what do you call those things that are blown up and you can jump in, one of those things? Yeah, and they had bands there, they were doing a lot of music, they were talking to the kids. They wanted to make sure that the kids were interested in music art and theater art. And they were really promoting that everywhere. And not only that, all of the band instruments, or the orchestra and band instruments will be replaced, they'll have new ones. Their computers will be replaced, their furniture will be replaced, and they're doing this in every school that they go to. And they are sponsored by Hollister, that makes athletic clothing, I think, or sweatshirts or something like that. And the other one is Taki, which I never heard of, but those are chips of some sort. And those are just two.
Child local chips.
Oh, you know what they are, two of the persons, oh, two of the companies that are providing this nonprofit with information. And I went to SCUP on Saturday. Let me tell you what that is. Annual School Community United in Partnership Conference. And this is held on the last day of our day with Maryland Association of Boards of Education. So I came home early to go to this because I've missed it so many times, and Gaithersburg is my area. And they had tons of workshops, but they had to do with immigration and losses and the socially-emotional kinds of things that happen to students. They had about 20 workshops, so it was really worthwhile being there.
Thank you for your indulgence. No. Thank you, and thank you for leaving me early to represent the board there, because I do remember us getting the invitation and responding and saying that we were going to be away. So I'm sure they appreciated some presence from the board. Ms. Sivestri.
Just want to remind parents that Monday is Parent Visitation Day at MCPS. So if you're curious about what happens during the day at your children's school, you can come anytime and spend some time in the classroom. It's always a very interesting experience. And also look forward to my visit to Gaithersburg High School on Monday to visit the Mets program. Just want to emphasize that as this population continues to grow, as it has this year, it's just super critical that the students get on a good path and stay, so that we're not having the conversation about what, what can happen when that doesn't happen. So look forward to that, that visit on Monday.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf.
Yes, I had the opportunity to attend my first Maryland Boards of Education Conference. And I just wanted to say that our own president, Shebra Evans, and our own vice president, Pat O'Neil, did an excellent job. They presented on the Evidence of Learning and on the resource study, and it was a big hit. I mean, we were still getting questions, and I'm getting emails, and I'll be referring them to you about this. I, you know, I found that conference very interesting because it's an opportunity for us to share our challenges with the other school boards of education and for them to share theirs, and for us to realize that we have a lot of the same things, some on a larger scale than others, but a lot of the same challenges. And also, it's an opportunity for us to share, as we did, our strategies for student success. I would like to ask Ms. Dixon and Dr. Daca if they can be a little bit more aggressive in getting us on the agenda, because I think that we have a lot to contribute and that, you know, we should have been up there on that forum. Thank you.
The only thing I can say to that is that we have always taken, taken over in the conference, and so we sometimes have to hold back because there are other counties, but, you know. You find that hard to imagine, 23 others.
Thank you. Mr. Tinby.
So somewhat of a, of a lesser, busier month than, than others for me, but I wanted to mention that I'll have a town hall for students in the Seneca Valley Cluster on October 24th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. to, to talk about all student issues, but also their upcoming Seneca Valley boundary decision. And also, this Thursday, I'll be at Einstein High School, and this Friday, I'll be at Gaithersburg High School. That's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
So thank you, Madam President. This is a very happy day for Yankees fans. They swept the Minnesota Twins, and we'll be moving on, and the Nats, the Natties. They came from behind, and so they are even with, what's that, what's that team in L.A. that they're playing? So we have, we have that to look forward to as well. I really am a diehard baseball fan, and Yankees especially, so really pleased about that. So I did want to mention that Ms. Evans, Ms. Wolf, Mr. Tinby, and Ms. Smundrowski, and our staff legislative assistant, Danielle Suskin, and I attended the CUBE Conference in Miami. And it really was, and CUBE stands for Council of Urban Boards of Education. And it really was probably among the best professional development that I've had since I've been on the Board of Education, because it was an opportunity for us to meet with other urban boards of education. And I do consider us a suburban, urban Board of Education, but, and they are focused, obviously, on educating all students, but predominantly African-American and Latino students. And it really, really was interesting to hear some of the ideas that they had in terms of educating students. So I'd really urge, you know, colleagues and, you know, administration, I know Dr. McKnight was going to go with us, and I'm sorry, there was a death in her family, but next year, it will be in Houston. And, you know, had a good time attending conferences or sessions, and some of the ideas were very, very interesting. For example, there's a very small district in Texas that does some incentives in terms of having their students take advanced placement exams. And in fact, they have some partnerships with corporations and, you know, well-off people. They pay students $100 that they get, you know, a three or better on the AP exam. And it's, and also the teachers get $100 for each of the students, their students that get a three or better on the AP exams. So I'm looking forward to an opportunity to debrief with colleagues and, you know, the administration on that, but would really be great if next year, we had, you know, more of us attend, because it's just a different way of thinking, and I think, you know, we need, just to get all of these ideas to help us move forward. And... And I was very impressed at how hard Mr. Tinbite worked on his studies during the conference, although he did have a good time at night and, you know.
Checking your colleges, of course.
No, yeah, he was a concert there and it was fine. And he knows how to Uber and, I mean, I don't know how to Uber, but anyway, I think you had a good time too, right? Yes, you did, yeah. I think we all did. And, you know, so I'm really grateful to have been able to go. It was good. I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith? Dr. Smith?
Dr. Smith.
I'm good.
No, I started, I started, I started with her. I started with her at the very beginning, yes. I didn't skip over anybody.
So as everyone has shared, there's a lot going on. I wanted to call attention again to our enrollment. I stated it a few minutes ago in response to a question from one of the board members, but we do have over 2,700 more K through 12 students this year after a slowing in growth last year. And so that is a pressure and it means that we have to really pay attention and meet the needs of every single student that walks in our school. And that's the central purpose of this school system. And so it's important to just be aware of that. I also just want to call attention to the Foundation Breakfast. It was a delightful experience to spend time with the students that morning and their questions are just outstanding and their ways of thinking so inform all of our work and the way that we do our jobs together. And I really, really appreciate that. I want to also just repeat again, excuse me, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, the NAACP, Parents Council, and Identity are sponsoring the forum on October 15th. It's a free event at Gaithersburg High School from 7:00 to 9:00. And it's the Black and Brown Forum and it looks at the needs of our students of color and what we need to be continuing to do and increasing and changing in order to meet the needs of every student. And so that is an opportunity for everyone in our community to join in that conversation and that experience. This week, we have a Verizon Innovative Learning Initiative launch. You all know that at three of our middle schools, Forest Oak, Argyle, and Neelsville, we have a technology grant and instructional grant and it intersects the use of tablets with instructional practice. And all students, all adults, everyone is involved. They joined 52 other schools in the latest cohort of Verizon Innovative Learning Schools for this school year. And so the kickoff will be at Argyle Middle this Friday, October 11th. There will be an event in the morning there to kick it off. And we're really grateful for the partnership with Verizon and Westat and how we do our work and think about how to always better meet the needs of all students. Also want to call attention to an event I did not get to attend last week. I was away, but I've been the previous three years and I love this event. International Walk to School Day was last week. And dozens of schools throughout MCPS held events. Arkola Elementary School, where members of the Montgomery County Police Department, Fire Department, county officials, and Dr. Maria Navarro, our chief academic officer, represented me there, joined together to walk to school. And one of my favorite activities is this day of everyone coming together. The Vision Zero Initiative here in the county is a multi-agency effort that also looks at how we can make it safer to walk in Montgomery County because even one fatality or accident involving a pedestrian is too many. And so they work together with us and many other agencies to create safer streets for pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers. And there is also an event coming up that'll be hosted by the Montgomery County Council of Parent Teacher Associations and the county's Pedestrian Bicycle and Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. That's at Northwood High School from 8:30 to 12:30 on October 19th. And once again, this is an event where people can come together and discuss ways to make it safer and have safer routes to school and everywhere else they want to go in our community. And so we have a few video highlights that I would like to show on National, International Walk to School Day.
That Walk to School chant filled the neighborhood streets surrounding Arkola Elementary School as students, staff, family members, and community leaders celebrated International Walk to School Day. Schools all across MCPS and the world participated in this annual event.
This is a wonderful activity to do. I just talked to a mom who was walking alongside with me and said, we got off the bus and decided to walk to school. And we're actually considering using more and more days where we can actually walk to school. And it's a great opportunity for kids to walk through their communities. Many of our students walk every day to schools. And so it's just an important day to make the community aware of that.
So we want kids to cross and walk safely. We want them to look both ways or look left, look right, and look left as they cross the street. And talk to their families about doing the same thing so that they can be safe as they walk.
This is a great opportunity for kids to get some exercise, see their friends walk into school, chat with their parents, you know, get a little off-screen time.
This day helps us to bring our community together around a common theme in terms of being safe and making healthy choices, but also bringing our community together in a fun and innovative, creative way. There's so many people that were involved with today. Everyone, Montgomery County Police, Montgomery County Fire and Rescue, actually, Fire and Rescue brought a truck out and the kids got a chance to get in and experience the fire truck and talk to some of our neighborhood firefighters. Afterwards, we had an assembly to emphasize the day and we heard from several officers and guests that we had to talk about again, the importance of walking and how to stay safe when walking to school.
Arkola students shared their thoughts about the day.
I learned how to be safe when I'm walking. I enjoy like walking because I get like more energy.
We got to exercise and I had a lot of fun.
And this is certainly an effort across our entire school system. Curriculum, operations, instruction, school support, student services, every area works on this area, on this issue of helping students learn and understand how to walk safely in the community and helping the community understand. And I'll call all of our partner agencies to join with us, with the State Highway Administration to take action where it's under their jurisdiction to make some changes in our community that need to be made. And we'll continue to push on that as we have in the past.
Very good. Ms. Wolf?
I was remiss when I talked about the presentation that you all did at the Maryland Association of Boards of Education in that I didn't thank Dr. Janet Wilson for her participation. And I got to tell you, she does an excellent job, of course, because every time I hear this, I learn something. And I learned something from the questions that we get from the audience too. But if you're out there, she's not in here, right? Thank you.
Absolutely. I was going to catch that, Ms. Wolf. I know you didn't do that on purpose, but definitely wanted to thank Dr. Wilson from Shared Office of Accountability. She was great in providing the additional information alongside myself and Mrs. O'Neal. The board gets very few opportunities to receive professional development and I really look forward to the few opportunities that we do get throughout the year, which is at CUBE, mentioned by Ms. Dixon, Council on Urban Boards of Education, as well as at Mabe, Maryland Association of Boards of Education. But I was going to mention, so we did go to CUBE and we had an opportunity to have our very own MCPS educators present. The BON network was there, building our own network of diversity. And I do want to, I see Dr. Inger Swimson in the audience. She was one of the people that helped develop the program. You weren't able to be there to present, but you were highlighted and represented very well by Dr. Damon Harris, by Dr. Darrell Howard, by Mr. Desmond Mackel, and then by Jose, Mr. Jose Medrano. I don't want to get that wrong. But they presented to the attendees on how to recruit, retain, develop, and empower male educators of color. We had a packed room, standing room only. They were very well received and were giving out their information to all of the people that were in attendance, wanting to know how they could start something of their own in their own school district. So just want to say thank you to them as they are continuing to share their work. We do know that there is a shortage of male educators of color throughout the U.S. and we are working very hard here in Montgomery County to not only diversify our teaching workforce and our staff, period, but our male educators of color. So just wanted to recognize them for sharing their great works and not keeping that to themselves. And then at Mabe, I was just going to mention, being able to present alongside Dr. Wilson and Mrs. O'Neal, that it was very well received. And everyone was talking about how they could take this work back to their various districts and they want to hear more. So Ms. Christina Webb, our chief of staff, is going to look into trying to host an evening of conversation to be able to provide that information to officers and whoever they want to invite. We want to share our work. We want people to be able to know how well their students are doing and if they're not learning enough to figure out why and see how schools impact the learning. And people were very receptive to the idea of having an external consultant come and do findings or an audit of allocation of resources. So just really had a great time in sharing that information with our colleagues. And as it was said, we all are going through the same thing, so why not share and do this work together? On Sunday, I was able to, you know, it's hard to try to find that balance between your work and your personal life. But I always say, whenever the students call on me, or I'm sure my other colleagues can attest to this, that you very rarely turn them down. So I got a call to come out to YCC's event, that is Youth Creating Change. They were at Richard Montgomery. We were in a classroom. Councilmember Evan Glass was there as well. And they were just talking about the work that they're doing throughout the county around issues that they're passionate about. YCC provides some funding to the students. They provide the students that are in the program training to know how to advocate and go out and do this work. And they help them with budgeting. So we had students that were presenting their ideas. There was a young lady from Blake High School. She had the first-ever diversity gala where she wanted to highlight students that are achieving at high levels and have them recognized. She's also a member of MSP. We had a young gentleman, I'll say names, let me see. So Olivia did the diversity gala from Blake. We had Tariq from, he was a former student at Twinbrook Elementary School and now he's at Richard Montgomery. So they are tutors to the students at Twinbrook, providing them access to more STEM opportunities. We had Luca. He is a junior at Einstein. They have an organization they created called Valencia. So that's Spanish and in the English translation is courage. And they want to work with the, they are working with Hispanic students that are not typically achieving at high levels, just working with them to combat different barriers that they're tackling. So it was just really an informative meeting that I just asked them to, in the future, just share the work that they're doing with board members. That way, we can see what our students are doing. And the one thing I was able to say, I said, you know, we have a mission and vision and purpose here at MCPS. And I could see all of that in the students that were in the room. We had middle schoolers there trying to get an idea of what this organization is about and what they're doing to create change right here, not only in their county, but also in their local schools. So I just wanted to share that and just say, it was a pleasure to spend an evening away from home, but to be with students that are doing some good work. So I just wanted to make mention of that.
Dr. Smith?
I just wanted to say in response to what you were just saying about sharing work across the state, there are over a million pre-K through 12th grade students in the state. And anything we can do, our core purpose, our essential reason for being here is Montgomery County. And we understand that and know that. But anything we can do to support all of the states, all the students in this state is critically important. And I think as Ms. Dixon was pointing out earlier, also, learning from others is so critically important. We have a lot to share. We have a lot to learn. And these are great opportunities to do that.
Absolutely. I didn't see whose light went on first, Ms. Wolf or Dr. Daka?
It doesn't matter to me.
So, Dr. Daka?
I was just, I wanted to say that, Ms. Wolf, I appreciate what you said about all the things that we do here because we have so many wonderful programs and so many great people. I just wanted to say that because of Ms. Dixon, the persons that were participating in Mabe were going to the Capitol to do a tour of the dome in the Capitol in Annapolis because we know she loves history and it's really important. And also, Ms. Barbara Hunter, that we have worked with on communication. I suggested her. So I think we've had our hands all over it, but we will continue to do that. We need your suggestions because we've got to go again. Oh, Regina Jacobs also did equity. And she had been the president of Mabe at one time, but now her total life is working with equity issues all over the country.
Ms. Wolf?
My comment was about the BON presentation, which was excellent and received a lot of attention. And it appears as though they might receive a number of invites to participate at various conferences. And I believe it would be advantageous to us to have them go out and do this. What I'm wondering is if we are supporting them? And if not, how can we support them?
We have actually supported them. I've had the chance to be an audience member in their presentations at two previous concerts and conferences in the last couple of years. And we do support that because, once again, it's about meeting the needs of the students of Montgomery County, but also making sure across our state and nation that we're sharing all the best practices. And we'll continue to do that because it is such an innovative and important part of the work that's going on right now.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
Yeah. So Shebra, I just wanted to thank you for, you know, representing us and, you know, just your hard work this last week. Yeah, you went to CUBE, then turned around and went to Mabe. And then I know that the program, and that was all in the same week that you did on Sunday. The invitation came like the day before and you said yes. So I think you're going to be an iron lady soon. Thank you very much for doing that. We really appreciate it.
No problem. No problem.
So at this time, I want to ask committee chairs if you have any updates that you'd like to share. We'll start with Dr. Daka. Or you'll be coming up, so do you want to?
I'm coming.
Yep, so we'll go to Ms. Sevesteri.
Yes, the Strategic Planning Committee has its first meeting of the year on October 23rd from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. We will be talking about the key facility indicators, an explanation of those, as a preview to our CIP year. Also, going deep with the Evidence of Learning data. We heard about that a lot at the last meeting, but what are we doing about it, right? That's, we talk about the names and faces. So going deep on the Evidence of Learning. We have a plan for the entire year and that will be shared with my colleagues shortly so that we're tackling each of the areas of the strategic plan at times when they make sense throughout the year. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Wolf?
The Communication and Stakeholder Engagement Committee will meet Tuesday, October 15th, 10 o'clock.
Okay. Ms. Dixon?
Right, I think I reported on our meeting at our last board meeting, but the Fiscal Management Committee will meet on October 30th at 10 a.m. And I was so excited about the baseball teams, I forgot to mention that I will be visiting Twinbrook Elementary School again, just to see how they are doing. And that's coming up, I think, on the 21st. And also Cloverly Elementary School next, or the Thursday, the 17th. Look forward to visiting with those principals and staff.
Okay, very good. Mrs. Smodrowski?
Special Populations will be meeting this Thursday, October 10th, at 10 a.m. We will be covering and discussing our recovery and academic program, restraints and seclusions, and we will be getting an update on the Mental Health Week stuff.
Thank you. So seeing other lights, we've heard from all of our committee chairs. I do want to just read briefly about our public notice about upcoming CIP work sessions and hearings. Beginning on November the 4th, 2019, the Board of Education has set aside time to work on the superintendent's work on the superintendent's recommended fiscal year FY 2021 capital budget and the FY 2021 to 2026 capital improvements program, including the following. The Seneca Valley, Clarksburg, and Northwest High School Clusters Boundary Study, the Forest Knows Elementary School Area Boundary Study, and the District Ra, the District Wide Boundary Study. We have set aside nights to hear from PTAs, municipalities, civic organizations, and interested individuals on the superintendent's recommendations and the boundary studies. The Board will hold hearings on November the 5th, November the 7th, November the 13th to hear public comments. Additionally, November the 18th has been designated as the evening for the hearing solely regarding testimony on the district-wide boundary analysis that is currently underway by WXY plus Architecture plus Urban Design. Work sessions will be held on November the 4th and November the 19th. If alternatives are offered at the Board's work session on November the 19th, the Board will hold an additional hearing on November the 20th. Again, the November 20th hearing will only be held if alternatives are offered on November the 19th. The Board is scheduled to take final action on these matters at its meeting on Tuesday, November the 26th, 2019, which begins at 5:30. At this time, we will be moving to item number seven, consent items. If there are any items that board members would like to pull out, please let me know. If not, we can move all in block. Can I get a motion to move?
Move in block?
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to move all items in block. Can I get a? And that is unanimous. Very good. So our next item is item eight, discussion on the calendar. Dr. Smith?
It is that time of year again to work on the school calendar, and I know much work has been done leading up to today. It's interesting and important to note that there's been a shift in policy in Maryland due to legislation last spring. School districts are no longer compelled to start before Labor Day, or after Labor Day. They can now start before Labor Day if they so choose, and end later than June 15th if they, they so choose. And so there are so many variables in this work that is important for us to walk through it very methodically and think about it and talk about it. And it certainly is true that every family circumstance and every individual has different interests and different ways of thinking about the school calendar, but what we know is that it does matter to families, it matters to staff, and that it's important that we work through it in a very methodical process and that we consider every angle of it. And so today, we have Dr. Zuckerman and Ms. McGuire here to talk about that, and so I will turn it over to them.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Dr. Smith. The calendar process, as you know, is an iterative one where we bring different parameters to the Policy Management Committee, we get feedback, we have stakeholder involvement, we bring additional scenarios to you, more feedback, more comment, and then we'll come back in November or possibly December, depending on how the process unfolds, to adopt the calendar, your, your calendar. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. SC McGuire, who has had extensive engagement with Policy Management Committee already and can walk through just our timeline as well as the various scenarios that we've currently developed. And that's not to say that there can't be additional scenarios that come out of this meeting or subsequent to this meeting.
Thank you. So I will, I'll just start by, as Dr. Zuckerman said, we've had a lot of process to get us even to this point, and there was, there are still many more steps to go in terms of hearing from the public and communicating about the calendar. The Policy Management Committee did have its initial review of the, of the calendar parameters in July. And following that, we convened internally with MCPS staff. We, what we really do is start with having all of our staff representatives from across the different departments involved to just create what are the parameters that can help us have just a functional instructional calendar? And then we brought some of those scenarios back to the Policy Management Committee in September. And that was really sort of the first time that we had a, excuse me, a broad public discussion of what, again, a functional instructional calendar might look like for the next coming year. And then following the Policy Management Committee review, we did continue to have both internal stakeholders as well as begin the conversation with external stakeholders, again, just around those initial parameters. And again, we will continue following today's meeting to continue that process. So in our initial discussions, we have been working with our employee associations and representatives, our, our council of PTAs, advocacy groups. We've had a lot of good interactions with the Student Advisory Council. And of course, we've been working with the Innovative School Year Implementation Group as well. We do have both the traditional calendar and the innovative school year calendar moving on parallel tracks together. And again, we will have scenarios for both of those for you today. Where we really go after today is to start that much broader, broad-based, and more widespread public engagement about the calendar. So we'll go through with you today, sort of again, the first range of scenarios that have been put together. And really what the Board will do today is identify what range of scenarios do you want to put out for the public to more broadly comment on and to bring that feedback back to you. We will pursue some of the same strategies and approaches that we have in recent years. Everything will be available on our website. We do try to communicate pretty broadly through email and connect to Ed to invite that comment. We get comments and survey on the web, of course, reach out through social media, and then directly, we do reach out to our stakeholders, both internal and externally, and again, with students. So with that, I'm going to start walking through briefly the parameters of the calendar for the 2020-2021 school year. I always have a little trouble saying that. As Dr. Smith mentioned, we are not bound in this calendar by any restrictions on the start or end date to the school year. Labor Day in 2020 is very late. It's Monday, September 7th. And so that does, of course, affect sort of our considerations around when the first day of school might be. This list that you see here on the screen, and, and again, is available on the website, this lists the days that were required to be closed by state law. In addition to that, there is one day here, inauguration day, which is actually not in state law, but is specified in board policy. And we'll have some more conversation about that, that feature of the calendar a little bit later on. So again, as we discussed, Labor Day is very late. We did develop scenarios that reflect start dates both before and after, just so that we could really see sort of what are the impact of these various elements on the calendar. I do want to highlight that all the scenarios we're bringing to you return to MCPS's previous practice of a full spring break. That consists of six non-instructional days and does encompass two weekends. And certainly that's consistent feedback that we've heard over recent years. So again, without the constraints, we felt that it was reasonable to bring that forward. Excuse me. Professional development is a very, again, a very significant area that we've heard a lot of feedback from in staff, by, from our staff in recent years. These calendars, the scenarios that you'll see before you do return to our previous practice of having a full planning and grading day for planning, for teacher planning and professional development at the ends of quarters. Again, with the constraints of recent years, we had to abbreviate that and make certain adjustments, but we are returning to that practice of a full day at the end of quarters. And again, this is just an area where we continue to hear from staff, and we share that view, that professional development within the school year and having that additional time is very valuable. And so as a result, some of the scenarios that we'll bring forward show additional professional development time scheduled above those end-of-quarter days, and we'll, we'll come back to that. Inauguration Day in 2021 falls on Wednesday, January 20th, and it does create a little bit of a dynamic in the calendar in that Martin Luther King Junior Day is on Monday, January 18th. Again, board policy is for the school system to be closed on inauguration day, so that would raise an issue of what to do with the day in the middle, which is Tuesday, January 19th. The Policy Management Committee did request an option for us to discuss, for the Board to discuss, where school would be in session on inauguration day. And certainly to implement that, we would need to make a change to the board policy. And again, we can map out those steps and talk about that possible language a little bit later in our discussion. But I did just want to highlight, as we look at the scenarios, that inauguration day and that sequence of days is one issue for consideration. So at this point, we do have seven scenarios in total. I will not try to belabor all of them individually, just going to hit a few highlights of them. And again, they are available online for folks to view, but, but coming out of today, I certainly would anticipate that we would move forward the scenarios that the Board is most interested in receiving feedback on. Scenario A, the first three scenarios, scenario A, B, and C, are the ones that the Policy Management Committee saw first. Scenario A is the only scenario that we've developed at this point that starts after Labor Day. As you can see, that puts the first day of school on Tuesday, September 8th, and it does result in a fairly late end of school. The last day of school would be on June 22nd, and that's, of course, before snow days are factored in. There could be snow days through the rest of that week if the year needs to be extended. Those are the primary outlines of Scenario A. Scenario A also does show the system closed on inauguration day and open on that Tuesday, the 19th. And again, as you see, the purple days do reflect that end-of-quarter planning and development time. Scenario B starts before Labor Day. It starts on September 1st. Scenario B does show the system closed on both the 19th and the 20th of January. That would sort of alleviate any concerns about attendance on the 19th and just provide sort of a second winter break, if you will, at that point. Scenario B, again, starting on September 1st, does allow the school year to end a little earlier on the 17th. And I'm sorry, I should have noted, on the orange days on the calendar are the days that were required to be closed. Scenario C starts, just, the only couple of differences here, Scenario C does start on August 31st, and in Scenario C, it does show the school system open on inauguration day. And there, again, the school year does end earlier, but it does show that, that movement there in January. Scenarios D and E are two scenarios that we wanted to bring forward, again, sort of following that next round of development and conversation with stakeholders. We did want to bring forward scenarios D and E that both add two additional days of professional development within the school year of the calendar. And again, that's to be responsive to those conversations and feedback that we've had. So those are really the primary differences with scenarios D and E. Both of them start before, before Labor Day. Both of them end that, next to last, the, the week of June 17th. And in both of these scenarios, they show the system closed on inauguration day and open on the 19th. Again, these calendars were really just meant to sort of show how some of the elements come together. Certainly, they can be combined in different ways for scenarios to move forward. In this case, on Scenario D, the additional professional development days above the ones at the end of quarters, one of them would be an additional day of pre-service on August 31st, and one of them would be an additional day in the middle of the two semesters on January 29th. Again, these are just examples. Those days could be put in different places, and certainly in our conversations with principals, with our employee associations, we've had different feedback about what might be useful for those days. Scenario E?
I just want to add one thing, and that is in, in all of these scenarios, what's not reflected but will be in the final is a, is a five-day pre-service week. So there's an assumption built into this that the week of August 24th, at least in scenarios D and E, would be a five-day pre-service week. So the placement of the two professional learning days, as Ms. McGuire said, one could create a six-day pre-service week, or another one could preserve the five-day pre-service week and then have two professional learning days in the middle of the school year. And, and as she said, there's multiple places to schedule them in different schools of thought, and I'm sure the Board might have some suggestions about where they might go as well.
And exactly, in Scenario E, you see that, again, it's just a different placement of those professional development days. We did retain for this example, one at that semester break in January, and moved the other one into the spring in March. Again, as, as Dr. Zuckerman said, there are different thoughts about when those professional development days might be most useful. We've heard from some folks that the extended pre-service would be a helpful time. We've also heard from some folks it might be helpful to have one in each semester. So there are different, there are different views. I think it is, we've also heard some feedback that stacking them together at the semester break may not actually be the best practice. So again, we're, we're looking at different configurations that might be useful for that. But the concept of what we were trying to present there is really just having those two days.
Okay.
So I do want to jump briefly to the innovative school year calendar. Again, we are carrying through the, that process as well. At the same time that we are developing the traditional school year calendar, we're working, the two innovative school year schools of Arcola and Roscoe Nick's Elementary Schools have an implementation team and, and have a calendar work group within that team. I've met with them, and certainly the other folks who are working more directly with them, have talked with them about calendar scenarios. A couple of important points about that, their scenarios do continue to reflect 210 instructional days, which is the model that we're using this year. Excuse me. There are two scenarios that we have at this point, just to identify the rough frameworks that might be feasible for the, for the innovative school year. And those really do align to some degree with when the traditional school year might start and end, because certainly we want those calendars to have a flow together as well. Our presumption for the next year is that we will continue the practice of aligning the calendars during the time that both are in session. The school system is either in session or out of session. There wouldn't be different days open and closed for each type of school. What can be different is some of those operational and educational priorities, when the end of quarters are, when the half-days are, when professional development time within those half-days might occur. So conferences, there are a number of those kinds of things that can be different, but it is, it is an assumption that during the time that the traditionally calendar is open also, that the school system, again, is either open or closed. And so just very briefly, I just want to touch on the two innovative calendar scenarios that we have. One, Scenario A really matches more closely with a school year that would begin at the, that would be, this one aligns, sorry, this one aligns more closely with the possibility that the traditional school year calendar would start after Labor Day. And as you can see there, the, the start date would be July 13th, and then the school year would end on July 18th. The school year does end in the innovative scenarios a little earlier than the traditional, but even so, it would push it late. Scenario B would reflect sort of a more similar practice to how, to what is being experienced this year, and would start on July 6th. Again, these really just represent that framework. A lot of the individual, more individualized decisions are still being worked through with the innovative group. Just a couple more notes, and then we'll turn it over for discussion and questions. Regarding inauguration day, again, the Policy Management Committee did have extensive conversation about this, about this issue and this consideration. And in some anticipation of the possibility that a scenario where the system is open on inauguration day, the Policy Management Committee did have a discussion about what a policy change might look like that would implement that, that scenario. The current language in the school, in the policy does say that when inauguration falls on a school day, that day shall be designated as a system holiday. The proposed language that the committee recommended sending forward for the Board's consideration would make that conditional and would say that it may be designated, but also specifies that there would be consideration of other factors impacting the school calendar. So I think that the intent was to really ground that in other dynamics that are occurring in the calendar, such as when the first and last day of schools is, what day of the week it is, when other holidays fall, really looking at it within the totality of the calendar. And we just would note that this policy change would be needed to implement any scenario in which the system is, is open on inauguration day. If the Board chooses to move forward for consideration, among all the scenarios, any that is open for inauguration day, it would, in order for the policy change to be affected at the same time as the calendar, we need to move forward the tentative action for public comment at the same time. So really, our next steps, again, are following today's discussion to really launch that broad public engagement effort around the scenarios. We will convene further feedback discussions with internal and external stakeholders, continue to work with our innovative school year partners. And again, if the Board approves the tentative action to amend the school calendar for inauguration day, we would conduct that public comment period at the same time, and then bring all of that report back to the Board for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time-
So at this time, I will start with Mrs. O'Neal and go around the table. Any comments?
Yes. One thing that I want to point out is that when the governor signed his original executive order mandating that we start the day after Labor Day, it also said we had to end by June 15th. So with the legislative change, I mean, both ends of the calendar are, you know, up for grabs. I do believe, though, I mean, the end date, you know, parents have said June is not as productive as at the start of the school year. And so, and, you know, June 22nd is extraordinarily late, especially if you think about having to add in additional snow days. I mean, we may be faced with another snowmageddon at some point, you know, we don't know. So the other pieces, I personally believe that we should go ahead and change our policy and be open on inauguration day. I think that that, this year, the way inauguration, or in this calendar scenario, inauguration day falling on the, I mean, with, it's always on the 20th, falling, you know, having Martin Luther King Junior Day on Monday, being open on Tuesday, Wednesday is as a closure under our current policy, would make for an incredibly awkward week. I'm not sure what our attendance would be like on January 19th, and just heating the buildings, et cetera. I, I think, the public is going to look at seven calendar options. I wish we were, like, just sending out three, you know, one starting, you know, September 8th, and then one with the decision about whether we start on a Monday or start on a Tuesday, pre, you know, starting that week before Labor Day. I think that seven options is, like, people are going to look at this, like, what do these all mean? I, and anyway, that's just me, but I think that's a concern. My preference is, in this calendar, to start before Labor Day. I think that with September 7th as Labor Day, it's about, I think it's as late as it can possibly be. It bumps us so late in June. But I fully support making the option of inauguration day, you know, a case, every four-year decision by the board, and, you know, considering operational needs and where it falls in the calendar.
And so certainly, we do not need to move forward all of the scenarios that we brought to you today. This really just is to document sort of the record of where the work has been. But I think what we're happy to do is compile scenarios that reflect the board's interest in the components that you want to see and put those out for recommendation.
And I do think that we should show the public an option that starts the day after Labor Day, because it's very easy, in the ideal world, to just think, okay, well, I believe we should always start after Labor Day, and so be it. But you need to look, not just at the front end of the school year, but at the back end. I sort of feel like we should put out A, B, and C, you know, and with some modifications, maybe as necessary, on the professional day, you know, to build in. It may not be as ideal for staff to have that professional day stacked at the end of the semester, but I know that for families, there are people who take ski trips and/or college visits, et cetera. So I think putting those together is a good idea, but I, but I, I think we should only send out three scenarios, at least one starting the day after Labor Day, and then two others on variations at the front end.
We'll hear from others. Dr. Daka.
I agree that we should send out three, one that begins before, and then the others, two that begin before, and one that comes afterwards, because the public needs to have a chance to look at all the options. And I do think the policy will have to change. We'll have to say we may be open for inauguration day, or whatever kind of wording we want to do, so that we can make that decision every four years.
Ms. Vestry.
I agree with my colleagues on what's been said, and just wanted to understand the professional development points. Could you help me understand the benefits of professional development during the school year versus in the summer? Because someone might say, oh, why don't you just do your professional development in the summertime rather than during the school year?
So, that's a great question. So there's a few reasons for it. One, when you are in the moment teaching and collaborating with colleagues, it's very helpful to have time to reflect on what you're doing. The professional learning days are not only opportunities for training, but collaborative planning among colleagues that will impact your work immediately the next day, the next week with students. So that's number one. Number two, historically, school systems have not had mandatory work over the summer. Many of our staff actually have second assignments. They're counselors, camps, they are tutors, there's a variety of work activities that they're engaged with. And we've heard pretty loud and clear from our staff that if the calendar were to allow for real-time professional development consistent with when students are in school, that that would be a preference for those reasons. And so, and there's opportunities and ways to situate those professional learning that maximize teacher professional learning throughout the duty year.
Ms. Wolf.
I also agree that we should only send out three at the most. My question would be around communication. I don't know about my colleagues, but I find this difficult to read. But I do notice that when you do it on the website, I can actually go in and print out a listing. And I'm wondering, even if you put these up, could you put it in a list, like you do when you put out the final, so that people could just say, starts on this day, ends on this day, professional development on these days? And then, at the bottom, maybe, of each list, put down what the changes are. But this, this is really hard unless you're sitting here telling me exactly what this means. Okay? That's it. Thank you.
Good point. Mr. Timbey.
I was so carried away in my board comments that I forgot to mention what happened in my last SMOB Advisory Council meeting, where we had Dr. Daka and Ms. McGuire come out to our meeting and actually talk about the calendar scenarios, which was really great. And we had, I believe, over 150 students, I'm not sure, yeah, most definitely. Anyways, there were around 18 groups where they got to break out into after hearing Ms. McGuire talk about all of our calendar options. And I definitely wanted to mention how, in my notes, I mentioned how Scenario C was definitely something that the students wanted to talk about, but they all considered all of the calendar options and definitely want to break it all down more to more students. But this was definitely an option that stuck out to them. When looking at this and when they were discussing inauguration day, starting before the, before Labor Day, that this was definitely a unanimous idea amongst all the students that were at the SMOB Advisory Council meeting. Some of the things that they mentioned were how it lines up better with the sports calendar, how more flexibility with snow days, and how school would start on a Monday and on a Friday. Not necessarily crazy things, but they did mention how this is something that they admired. So from a student perspective, this is definitely just one of the things that I wanted to bring to my colleagues.
Thank you. Ms. Dixson.
So, have several thoughts about this. I agree that we should send out three scenarios as well. For me, it's very important to hear some feedback from the community in terms of when school starts. And I don't know whether that can be taken into account, where we can get the views of staff, get the views of the community. That would be people who don't necessarily have children in school, and then those who do have children in school, to maybe try to break it up that way. In terms of inauguration day, looking at the 19th, wherever it falls, I wondered whether or not that could be a professional day for teachers. So you would put the holiday, the 18th, the 19th, and then with having inauguration day off, and then in a non-instructional day for students and teachers, and take away the professional day on the 1st. That's just something I'm going to throw out. I do believe inauguration day should be a holiday. I feel it is really important, especially in terms of what we are going through as a country here now, for students to understand the importance of who is the President of the United States, and to celebrate that election of whoever that person is. I think also, historically, we may have, and I think this was, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. O'Neal and Dr. Daka, but I think inauguration day was given off because the first African-American president was elected. I think there is a possibility, a strong possibility, that the first woman may be elected President of the United States going forward. And so, I just think that having students have that opportunity, obviously, they're not all going to be in front of the television watching, but you have three things there. You could put three days together where folks could, you know, families could be together, and also the historical nature of it. And I would imagine that right now, in national, state, and local government classrooms, that there should be a lot of learning going on about our system of government, that it is a constitutional system, the system of checks and balances and all of that, which is really, really important, and what can happen when, in fact, you know, those things are not followed. And so, I think, holding inauguration day as a holiday in the school system is really, really something that's worthwhile. So, that's basically, you know, I would like to know what the public and our students think about when we should start before Labor Day or after Labor Day. And there are, you know, reasons for both, I think. You know, personally, and sometimes I wish I could have this time back, but my children are a lot older now. But I enjoy, you know, having them home and being able to do some things with them. And so, I have mixed feelings about that. But I do know, the last time that the public was for starting school after Labor Day, in the state of Maryland, I don't know specifically. I think we need to be looking at Montgomery County and, you know, what our residents want there.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Modrowski.
So I pretty much associate myself with my colleagues. I too, I'm very interested in what the public's feedback is going to be from all different of our stakeholder groups. I also agree that there should only be potentially three calendars that go out. I thought I had marked down A, C, and E, as opposed to A, B, and C, but for however that. And then, I appreciate Ms. Dixon's comments about inauguration, but more specifically, about changing, if we were to stay open, the possibility of changing that. Which brings up an overall question, and I feel like I know the answer to this, but I just want to put it out there. As we hear back from the public, we can still make changes. I want people to understand that their feedback will be important, because if everyone says, well, we love this calendar, but we don't want this day off, or whatever, or we want, we'd rather see professional development here, these things can be rearranged and re-discussed. So I just want to make sure that the public knows that, so that we really get their true feedback, and they don't think that it's exactly what is here, and that that's their only room for comment.
And I'll reiterate, we're not voting today. This is just discussion only.
Right. And that's, absolutely. And that's definitely accurate. Again, we will put some scenarios, hearing, again, these different components to reflect in the different scenarios, and those will be out for comment. The board, then, we will certainly bring back all the comments and feedback to you, and may have suggestions for what scenarios would reflect some of those. But the board can always make the changes and amendments to those scenarios that you feel are necessary in advance of taking action.
Okay. Dr. Daka.
I just wanted to say, I like the way Ms. Dixon is thinking about the 19th as a professional day for teachers. Is that, does that cost us anything, since students will not be, would not be in class?
And that's Scenario B.
It costs us in the sense that it is a work day, and so, just, well, we'd have to have our buildings open in terms of receiving staff for professional learning and the collaborative planning time, so there would be those costs. I mean, and I just, I will-
Budget be trading it. First, of February.
Budget equal.
Neutral. I think you would probably have some teachers doing-
Teleworking at that, during that time as well.
Yeah. Well, and one thing we would, we've heard, just in terms of preliminarily, with one of the reasons for not, some pushback that we heard from staff around having the back-to-back professional days on the January 29th and February 1st, was that we might have a low attendance on the professional learning day. And I suspect that we would probably, similar to Ms. O'Neal's question around students attending school on January 19th, we'd probably have a similar situation with our employees as well. So I think it's something that we'd have to balance.
Ms. O'Neal.
I do agree with Ms. Dixon's about the need to elevate the importance of the presidency and the inauguration. When we had the Policy Management Committee, I said that I thought if we were open, that we should, or the superintendent and staff should direct the schools, that there should be learning activities, and televisions or the Promethean Board should be on to watch the inauguration. I remember when my children were younger and inauguration days fell on school days, because it was only with President Obama's first inauguration that we began the closing that, or that our policy was in place, but that, you know, prior to that time, you know, they watched in school. So, you know, but I think that's true everywhere in the country, whether you're in the nation's capital or not, it should be a time, it is obviously a lesson in democracy, you know. So I think that's important. I also know that several years ago, we did the calendar survey, I mean, and that's where we have, you know, there was a huge desire to have the full spring break, I think. Is that calendar survey, I mean, this will be, people will have the opportunity for input, and I think it's important for us to gather the input. But, you know, it is important to see beginning and end, you know, whether it's pre-Labor Day or after Labor Day. But the calendar survey, is it somewhere still up on the website, or can it be linked? You know, because that was pretty extensive. I mean, I think that was one of the highest survey participation rates we've ever had. And I think, you know, it influences this, these calendar options.
Absolutely. Yes, it's very important context, and it is still on our website, but we will also be sure that it's very prominently linked to when we compile sort of the feedback elements that we'll be putting together for these specific surveys, or calendars, rather. So that will be there as well.
So, do you want a motion that we send out only three calendars? I mean, would that, do you think that we have two pre, okay, I move that we put out for public comment, three calendar options, one beginning after Labor Day, and two prior to Labor Day.
And, I'm sorry, can I just clarify from the comments that I've heard? We would also put out scenarios both with inauguration day open and with inauguration day closed?
Yes.
And that would then also, I think, once we finish this discussion, we'll then need to affirmatively take action on the draft policy, the tentative policy change, to implement that, if that's the ultimate scenario. And then we would also, again, show different configurations within those three for the professional development days.
And include that the board has the prerogative at the final action- And clear that the board has the prerogative at the final action to change, to make accommodations within the desired calendar.
Correct.
That needs to be in the communication.
Absolutely. That's fine, yes, absolutely. And I do wanna clarify, each scenario will have a mirror with the innovative. So there'll be three traditional and three innovative. I just wanna be clear about that.
Are we gonna have two motions? One for the three scenarios, vote on that? One for the inauguration day?
It's, we have a...
Separate?
Yes.
Yes, I believe that's accurate.
I also wanted to mention before we put that motion, when we, when we work through the communication plan with this as well, is it possible if you all can work with the Student Leadership Office to make sure that there's a communication plan to students as well?
So we just...
Can you repeat the...
Ms. Sebastian, you want Ms. O'Neal to repeat the...
The proposed motion for inauguration.
Oh, there's, well, we have a separate, if you go down, there's a policy committee with the inauguration.
So we had a motion from Ms. O'Neal, Ms. O'Neal, do we?
What did the policy committee recommend? A, B, and C?
Yes.
Yes.
What? So the A, B, and C were sort of the, were sort of the first ones that were demonstrated that the policy committee moved forward, but I don't believe that those specific scenarios reflect the conversation that we've had here. So I think that what we would need to do would be to create new scenarios, we can call them something simple hopefully, that reflect the board's wishes in terms of, or reflect the board's comments from today in terms of these different scenario pieces, but I don't think any of them are captured in what you have right now.
Yeah, I, when I made the motion, I didn't say A, B, and C. I just said three calendars.
Three.
One start, I mean, one starting the day after Labor Day and two starting before Labor Day. Right, so one could be the Monday before Labor Day and the other Tuesday.
So I would, I would suggest cautiously that the motion may not wanna be real specific because again, what we'll need to do is try to put these different scenarios together to reflect your comments and reflect sort of the other needs that we need to incorporate. And I would just, I would just worry if it's, if we start good and real specific, then we may bump up against things that aren't working. I absolutely have heard the intent for not a large number and absolutely have heard the intent for two before and one after. And I've also heard the intent to, Labor Day, sorry, and I've also heard the intent that again, we show multiple configurations around inauguration day. And I would suggest that, I'm sorry?
And start day.
So start day was before and after Labor Day? I'm sorry, I wasn't clear about that.
I apologize. I meant more specifically the Monday or the Tuesday.
Yes.
Okay, yes. So, so absolutely, I think within, if the board is comfortable with setting those parameters, then I think that that may be enough direction for us to again, have some flexibility to put together a functional scenario.
So hopefully Victoria caught all that.
[laughing].
I'll repeat it. So we had a, we had a motion and a second to bring forward three calendars. I'm gonna, one before the start of Labor Day.
No.
No, one after.
One, the day after Labor Day and two, pre-Labor Day. One beginning Monday and one beginning Tuesday.
Okay. And so it was seconded by Mrs. Modrowski?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor? And that is unanimous? Okay. So now the next item on our agenda is item nine, action on board policy, and I will turn it over to Dr. Daka.
All right.
And welcome, Ms. Williams to the table.
All right. We need to look at the policy and decide whether we want to vote on having the policy indicate that we may look at this every four years. So that's what I'm proposing, that we change the policy to say that we may look at the policy on inauguration day every four years. Any comments?
I don't see any. Ms. O'Neal?
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you. All, all in favor of that?
I'm opposed to changing it.
You don't wanna change the policy?
No.
Okay. So let's read what is already in here. It says, "Proposed means when the day of presidential inauguration falls on a school day, that day may be designated as an MTPS system holiday upon consideration of other factors impacting the school calendar during the year of inauguration such as the first and last day of school, the day of the week for the inauguration, and the other mandated holidays during the school year." So it's not saying it's gonna be changed, it's saying that we're gonna consider and look at it. So I just wanna make sure that you were aware of that.
Right, I'm aware. It says May, but I think that, you know, if future Boards of Education wanna do that, let them do it then, but I, I'm, I feel very strongly about that. I can still remember, and I'm dating myself here, the inauguration of John F. Kennedy and how inspiring that was and how we really remember him to this day.
Absolutely.
And all of the people that he inspired to join the Peace Corps and just, well, I think it's very, very important and in light of, you know, what's going on in the country right now. I mean, you have to be, you know, have your head in, you know, stuck in the ground not to know, but I think it's very important that our students and, and really, all the adults in this country are aware of, you know, the importance of who we inaugurate as President of the United States and celebrate that, crowd size notwithstanding, and, you know, go from there. Okay? So I'm, I'm just...
Okay. I'm sure, okay, absolutely. Ms. O'Neal?
So this is tentative action to go out as all of our policies do, for public comment. So the public has the opportunity to communicate, you know, that, I mean, they may wish it to remain in the policy or may not, and ultimately then, the board will have to make that decision whether we're changing it to May on a case-by-case basis.
I think that's, yeah, we do have to wait for the comments from the public.
Right.
But I think we ought to put this out as a possibility. So do we need to vote again?
Yeah, we need to.
No. Okay.
I don't know that we really did.
You need to.
Yeah.
I read my answer, sorry.
Maybe everybody did. So it was moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay. So that is Mr. Tenby, Mrs. Modrowski, Mrs. O'Neal, Mrs. Evans, Dr. Daka, Ms. Sebastian, Ms. Wolf, all opposed. Ms. Dixon. Okay. So at this time, we are ahead of schedule. So we can, what we can do is go ahead and take our recess now for 15 minutes and come back at 2:30. So we are adjourned for 15 minutes. Thank you.
Welcome back. At this time, we are at item 11 for discussion. Dr. Smith?
Yes, thank you. Do a very brief history lesson here about what we're talking about as we look at the 2019 Every Student Succeeds Act Consolidated Strategic Plan. In 2003, the state of Maryland passed the Bridge to Excellence Act, which increased funding significantly for public education in the state, and it incorporated the elements of the No Child Left Behind federal legislation, as well as several elements of new legislation around student learning and school district cooperation. And the Bridge to Excellence required what was called the master plan. The master plan was in effect until just a couple of years ago. In 2015, the Every Student Succeeds Act, what we call commonly ESSA, was signed into law as a replacement for No Child Left Behind. A couple of years after that, the state of Maryland came together in the State Board and the General Assembly and through a variety of different pieces of legislation, came up with the Consolidated Strategic Plan under ESSA. And so it requires certain levels of federal reporting, certain levels of state reporting. And now, as the Kerwin Commission does its work, and in fact, will release tomorrow proposed funding formulas, there was legislation last year that's expected to be that legislation reaffirmed or changed this session in January when the... So there's a lot of shifting. While the shifting has occurred, then we still have to submit this plan to the state each year. It is based on a single measure, and that is the PARC, or now called MCAP Assessment. We all know that Assessment will change to a new set of forms and items this coming April. And so as we look at this single major set of data, it's particularly important that we remember that's why we don't want to hang our destiny on a single test score. We want to look at multiple measures across our system and across our student participation and performance and across our schools. And so today, in compliance with the law and because it does serve a purpose for us to look at this data and we can glean information and understanding from it, we bring before you the Consolidated Strategic Plan based on the Every Student Succeeds Act. And so I will turn this over to Dr. McKnight, who is going to frame it, and then over to our focus from curriculum and instruction.
All right. Good afternoon, board members. As Dr. Smith stated, the Every Student Succeeds Act really gives more control to the state and the local educational agencies around developing their accountability goals and models. In our last board meeting, you actually had an opportunity to see an example of our shared academic achievement portion by looking at the accountability model, the evidence of learning, and how we, as a system, have focused on the five focus groups that we see as a priority in how we define our data. So during today's presentation, we're going to focus on the Partnership for Assessment for Readiness for College and Careers, state-level achievement data using our focus groups, English for Speakers of Other Languages, and Special Education. Also, I'd like to note that in last month's presentation on the Evidence of Learning framework, this presentation will be different because it does focus on the one measure, as Dr. Smith stated, which is the PARC. And as Dr. Smith stated earlier, the Maryland State Department of Education is transitioning to a new assessment. And so as this transition takes place, having a local accountability model that uses multiple measures, as we do, our local district and external measures, will provide better monitoring systems to assess our student learning. And so again, it's important for us as a system and every system to really think about what are the measures that we'll continue to monitor that are reflective of our values and how we want to monitor student growth. And so finally, we'll spend a little more time going deeper with the slides for middle school mathematics. Some of our middle school students took their grade level PARC assessment, while others yet took higher grade level PARC assessments such as Algebra I and Geometry. And so Ms. Hazel will go into details in just a few moments, but I'll hand it off to Dr. Navarro.
So good afternoon, board members. I am here to talk about this very tiny reading material that we are submitting to the state. And as you have heard from previous years, we do this every year. It is both a compliance, but I agree with Dr. Smith, it also highlights for us important work that we're doing. And as Dr. McKnight and Dr. Smith mentioned today, we emphasize in this Consolidated Strategic Plan, although it focuses on looking at the PARC results, we talk about our work in using the equity accountability framework. And that's the way we're looking at our work and we're describing the achievement of our students. So I just want to frame, first and foremost, how this binder is organized. We have an executive summary, followed by a financial section, and then we have the areas of focus that we are talking about specifically here. And we're actually going to do the deep dive with Ms. Hazel on those areas, and we've organized them in a way that mirrors our focus student groups, so that you can see the PARC results for those students specifically. And I would also say that we also highlight here several state and federal grants that we use every year to focus, to support and do focused attention for our students. And those are our Title Grants, including Title I Part A, which is the support for a lot of professional development, and of course, for the supports for Title I schools, Title I Part D, which is the intervention programs for students and youth who are delinquent or neglected, Title II Part A, which focuses a lot on, and what we use to provide a lot of supports for our professional development, support models, and also supports the consulting work the teachers do around our PAR process. Title III supports English language learners, and Title IV actually emphasizes key areas, including access, more access and supports for the arts. It also supports the financing of, for students to be able to take AP and IB exams. So you've heard in previous years, the offsetting the cost of those fees, as well as expanding programs such as the summer camps, extension camps that support our specific emphasis in the middle schools for students as they choose programs for high schools, as well as other areas. And then finally, the state grants that we get to support more work in the fine arts. We also provide in this report to the state, the yearly report on victims of violent crimes and offenses in our schools. So with that overview, I want to turn it over to Ms. Hazel, who will go through, deep dive, once again, focusing on PARC. But really, this data is going to be organized also to be able to go deep with our focus student groups.
All right. Good afternoon. So we will, again, just focus on the one assessment, looking at PARC. I'm going to just spend a little bit of time focused on this one slide for a moment, and then we'll go through the others a little faster, just so that we can get a little oriented. Again, we just want to remind you that PARC gives students a score, 5, 4, 3, 2, or 1. 5, meaning that students are exceeding the grade level standard, 4, meeting the standard, and 3, approaching standard. Prior to last school year, the state did accept a score of 3, approaching standard. And so we did want to bring in the score of 3, and we shaded it there for you, so that you could at least see, prior to last school year, what score we were looking at with our students. But then last school year, the score of 4 was the standard that the state began to expect. So the score of 4 or 5 is where we began to look. And so we want to just begin to show you how our students performed at the 4 and 5, but again, we have the score of 3 there, just so that we have some frame of reference. You can see for our students, we're comparing 2018 and 19, for our students in grades 3 through 5 in ELA. We have there, you can see that the students had nice gains at the level 4, and you can see that they had nice gains in the level 4 area, and especially, I just want to highlight... Yes, I'm sorry. Level 4 in all of these areas, all of the students did well and had nice gains. Moving into math, grades 3 through 5, again, the students had gains in the level 4. Did want to highlight our non-Farms, Hispanic, Latino students also had nice gains in the level 4. Also, our ESOL students had gains in the level 3 and 4. And so you can see, oftentimes, we have some of our demographic groups that had high numbers in levels 1 and 2 on their PARC performance, and so they are able to make gains into that 3 and move their way up.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm not following the gains. So your example of non-Farms Latino, for example, for grades 3 to 5?
Mm-hmm.
35.6 and 35.6 is the same?
Oh. It is the same. I apologize.
The one right below.
The one right below. The one right below it. I apologize. The Farms, all student groups, 35.7 to 37.5.
Okay.
I would just point out, it's equally important to look at the N, because if you look at the non-Farms Hispanic Latino students, you see in level 3, there was an increase in the actual number of students who met that, in level 4, an increase in the actual number of students, in level 5, an increase in the actual number of students. When you see that the, you know, it's 43.5% to 43.8%, what that tells you is that there were gains in all three of those areas, and those were not, there was not an equal number of gains in 1 and 2, because you actually have a higher percentage. And so that's why it's always important to look at the N, the number of students in each of the categories, as well as the percentage, because while you may have dropped in percentage, you might increase significantly in the actual number of students who met the standard, which at the end of the day is what we want. We want all the students, the actual, one by one, but...
Moving to our ELA, grades 6 through 8, again, we had a number of gains in our level 4, students meeting level 4. Overall, students, 2% gain. We had a 2% gain for our non-Farms African-American, and our non-Farm Latino, we had gains also for our Farms, all subgroups, and our Farms African-American, Farms Latino had nice gains, and our Special Education students. And we also had students receiving a level 5 in terms of gains in our non-Farms, all student groups, non-Farms African-Americans, non-Farms Latino, and Farms, all student subgroup. When we get into our math, we just want to show that for our grade 6, this is where we want to distinguish that our students in mathematics begin to take different courses. In grade 6, our students can take a on-grade level Math 6 class, they can take the Investigations in Mathematics, or IM, class. And then you can see there that we even have some 6th graders taking algebra. So in 2018, you had 52 students taking algebra. In last school year, you had 89 students taking algebra. So that's a pretty significant increase. And so while the performance did dip a little bit, you can see that we had a nice increase in the students who are accessing the course. And so we did want to acknowledge the increase in participation there. So we wanted to highlight the number of students that are taking these courses.
Yep. Can you click one more time? So I do want to point out that you see some areas that are blank, and the reason for that is that we have suppression rules. So we actually do have students in 6th grade that are actually taking the geometry assessment. There are just few, there are just very few of them, and they are less than the number that we can publicly publish, so that it's not identifiable data. And as Nikki mentioned, I think one of the things that we wanted to highlight is just the number of students that we saw that increased, both in the Math 6, that they take their grade level, and then also, we had a little bit of a bump in the Algebra I. We want you to keep that concept that Dr. Smith and Ms. Hazel mentioned as we move through all the math, because you will see an interesting trend in students taking sort of higher-level math classes than their grade level assessments and how they did. And this is part of the conversation that we've had before. And this is part of the conversation that we've had before around the middle school years in mathematics.
So this is the grade six mathematics. You can see here that in terms of the level four and five performance, we did not have increases, but there, really, in terms of any of the areas, there were not really increases. There was an increase at the farms, all student groups, at the level three. But, and this is where the, the change in level, because we did have an increase in the level of students who took algebra, but the, the students who took the grade level increased, I'm sorry, the, the number of students who took the grade level increased, but the performance for this decreased here. So we know that that's something that we need to carefully watch. For seventh grade, we have, for our 2018, you can see that we have the nine thousand students in the seventh grade, and then in 2019, we had eight thousand students, but that is because we had an increase of students who took algebra in the seventh grade. So it's almost a thousand students more that took algebra, just about. And so you can see the difference in, in performance slightly dipped, but again, more students accessing the algebra in the seventh grade, and then you can see that we had then a few more students taking the geometry in 2019.
I just want to call attention here, this is the conversation we had at the last board meeting. Up until the, the current eighth graders, last year's seventh graders, the level three would have been counted as meeting the high school graduation requirement. And so while it's eighty point one percent over there in levels four and five, if you add the, the level three, then you have ninety-four point eight percent of the kids who took algebra one in the seventh grade met level three, four, or five. And this has been one of the great debates in the PAR test, and in this whole effort, is which one of these numbers, level three or level four, is actually a, a strong indicator of future mathematics success? And actually, a high level three, so if you're up in the, the high seven thirties or low seven forties, that's as good of an indicator statistically as being at seven sixty. If you're down close to seven twenty-five, that's a, statistically, they've shown that that is probably going to be less of a chance of future high-level math success. And so this is the level at which we need to look at this and understand what it indicates as just one of many measures that we use. And that's why this has value for us to look at, but it, it's not the thing that, that is going to change the world, this test. It's one test, it's one indicator, and that it serves a purpose. But we are right now waiting for the state to make a decision about this particular group of students, because we think it's unreasonable, and we've said that to the state, to say that this group of, the class of 2024, has not met their high school graduation requirement when their fellow students in the eighth grade, the class of 2023, did with the same score, and the test is going to change this year. So I just want to make sure we keep putting all that on the table. I got a response back from the state superintendent that said they're looking at it right now, and they will be back with us shortly. And so we'll keep our families and our schools very engaged in that conversation.
Let me look at our grade seven students. We had increases at the level three in almost all of the subgroups, and not quite at the four, level four. And at the eighth grade, we did not have any increases there. But we did have, excuse me, have some increases at the level, the, the level three for all student groups, non-farms, and for all groups and African American. And then when we get to the ELA for grade ten, again, ELA is an area of strength, so we did have some increases for all of our student groups in the levels four and five. So we did see bumps for those groups. Algebra, if we were to break down our algebra numbers, students in the ninth, tenth, and eleventh, ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade, in twelfth grade, we would have in 2019, last school year, fifty-four percent of our ninth graders took algebra in terms of this data. So fifty-four point not, fifty-four point five percent of them were ninth graders, thirty-three percent of them were tenth graders, eleven percent of them were eleventh graders, and just under one percent were twelfth graders. And so this is an area, again, that we need to do a lot of work with in terms of our algebra data in the high school, and we are doing a pilot of our algebra programming at the high school level, so that we can improve the, the work that we're doing with algebra in our, in our high schools. So as we think about the work that we're doing in terms of our priority strategies, you all know that we have new curriculum taking place at our elementary and middle schools. We've worked to really have a curriculum that is more aligned to the standards. We've worked to have, and we have been working very hard, as you can see, some of the ELA bumps that we've had, to have resources that are more aligned to standards and that are more aligned to grade level. We have students writing texts, to texts that are, that have questions that are aligned to the standards, and really making sure that they are responding to text-dependent questions. We want to make sure that we are providing professional development that is, is really meeting the needs of the teachers. We are focusing on making sure that our teachers have assessments that are aligned, that they can really respond to, in making sure that they are planning towards those assessments, and that they have the multiple measures, as they're thinking about their evidence of learning, and that they have the equity accountability model, and are really taking a look to make sure that they are looking at all of their, their groups of students, their focus groups of students, and ensuring that they are aligning their school improvement planning to the needs of their students. And so as we look at all of these pieces, and we are, are focusing that on our work, we're really trying to make sure that we're aligning all of the pieces together to improve our, our needs for students.
Very good.
So we can open it up for discussion with board members, but I'll just say, having recently given the presentation with Dr. Wilson, having heard it at the board table several times, myself and Mrs. O'Neal, I believe my, I won't speak for my board colleagues, but I'll say I'm very confident that we have the evidence of learning, the equity accountability model to be able to keep that watchful eye. So glad that we're doing this work. I will start with Dr. Daca, if you have any comments? No? Ms. Sylvester?
What happens next year with the new test? Like, how do you?
This has been a conversation of great discussion across, since for the last six months or so. I will say that I'm anxious about this. What we, what we don't want to say is that the tests are comparable or equated, when they're not. And I haven't seen evidence to support either, e- either conclusion at this point. And so right now, we're just waiting to look at the new assessments, and we think that there needs to be a lot of testing and modeling at the state level to show how they're equated. And we can do that research ourselves here, as soon as we have data on these tests. And if, if we have an equated model, then we can continue to show a trend line on that state assessment. If we don't, then it's my position that we stop showing a trend line and start a new trend line, but we insert the new test data as one, it's the state measure, it's one measure. And over time, it will show, over the first year or two, it will show, is it, is it more possible to get a higher score, the same degree of probability of getting the same score, or less possible to get a higher score? In plain language, is it easier, harder, or about the same in terms of its rigor and its cognitive demand? And so that's probably the, I would say, the biggest question mark in the state of Maryland right now around assessment and around the state program, because the place this is going to have profound impact is on the state report card. And what happens with that state report card, because not only we have a new test, you have the introduction of science, social studies, and a climate survey that will be all, also added to that state report card. So I don't want to diminish the importance or the value of the state report card, and at the same time, I want to give all of the caveats and warnings that we have to look at every angle of it before we draw any conclusions about what it says about us or each of our schools.
And my second question is about the communication with the families of the students that took seventh grade algebra and did not meet the four. How's that going? What do they know?
The, the schools have been notifying the parents, and I know that Ms. Hazel, for example, has been working with one particular parent that has been contacting me when, at the same time, so I'll have Ms. Hazel share with you how that process has gone and what, and what's happening.
Yes, so all of the families have been notified. Students are either in before-school, after-school, or during-the-day programs, or they're doing online, at-home programs. And their, the assessment will be given this fall, or winter, excuse me, and if, when the students can make up the assessment.
So they're doing some online practice, or?
Online practice.
Based on what their deficiencies were?
I'm sorry, the good news about this is, if the state reverses itself and says that they don't have to take another assessment, they're still getting additional math support. And that's what's most important, much more important than the, the test score, is that they are solid and strong as they continue this year and future years in math.
We're doing that for, I don't mean to interrupt, but we're doing that for everyone who got a four.
Three.
A three.
A three.
In the seventh grade.
Or lower.
I just wanted to make sure that there's, it's, it's not something like they, they ha, the parents will, equity, I guess, is getting, it's not like the parents have to seek out this help, it's being provided to everyone that needs it.
Yes, we gave them multiple op, options, so they could do it during the school day, if they wanted to do it, or they could do it before, after. It, we gave them about seven or eight different options to meet their needs.
Who decides what option is taken?
The parent, the parent and the student decided. Saturday was also another option, but most, I don't believe any family opted to do that one.
Parkland is actually doing a Saturday program.
Okay.
They're doing it with George B. Thomas. And, and one of the things I just want to point out is, the way this came about is, we had the OSSI associates meeting with Nikki and, and the directors, and so that we had a logic model, because we know every student, and we have a list of students. And so we created a, a logic model to follow, what are the options for every single school? How's it going to be communicated? Parents then had to submit back information about where each, I'm looking at Cheryl, oh, there's Kim, around exactly what option every single student in the building was going to do, so that the schools don't have fifty options, the school had, are able to monitor and offer a couple of options, and they're monitoring every single student, so that when they retest, we want to be able to see the, the results, obviously, and we will see those results, but more importantly, we make sure that those concepts, when we unpack their PAR scores, which concepts were triggering them that had the, the most deficit, and those are the ones that we emphasize. So one of the things that is important is sometimes those online modules, we were able to target and individualize based on where your PAR range scores were.
Will there be an opportunity, or does it make sense to have an opportunity to retake the class?
Yes, so we have some parents, I think there were some options where they're able to take their, retake the class, or a compacted version of the class. Again, you know, one of the things that we are learning is sometimes if we unpack the areas where the students have the most need, we don't need a student to sit for a full year of a class. It opens up their options for other electives that they can be taking, and we hone in on which of the areas that, that the student really needs to practice and focus on.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to add too, for students that are taking algebra, parents also get a notice on the front end, in the event that there's, so what, what the requirement is, and in the event that their student doesn't meet the graduation requirement, what they have to do in order to get up to speed. So I'm a parent whose child is taking algebra one in middle school, and we receive that information at the beginning of the year, and then we got something in writing at home, so it's like on the refrigerator for everyone to see, but I just wanted to make note that.
It's a parent strategy.
I just wanted to add that, that we do some communication on the front end, so that parents aren't caught off guard, in the event that their child does not pass the class.
And Ms. Simmons, I just want to point out also, and this is Ms. Sylvester's point, I think, and, and it's a very clear one, it's how we've been operationalizing, is the school has a plan for every student, no matter what, and it is our responsibility to have a plan for every single student. We inform the parents, we engage the parents, but we are ultimately responsible to make sure that every single student has a plan.
Absolutely. Ms. Wolf?
I think that Ms. Sylvester covered most of my questions. The only thing I wanted to know is, are these children that got a three and got caught in the middle, are they in the next level math class? Are most of them taking the next level and also revisiting algebra?
Most of them are. It was, it's really up to the family to make that decision. Some are doing the next, taking geometry in addition to prep class.
It, it just seems to me that has to be very stressful for the, for the kids, so I'm wondering, do you anticipate a decision from the superintendent before the test?
Yes, I'm, I'm hoping that it will be at the end of October at the state board meeting, and then they'll have another state board meeting in the middle of November. And I stressed at the last superintendent's meeting that it's, time is of the essence, absolutely critical that we know now, rather than waiting until they've taken the test and then changing the requirement, right?
Mr. Timbite?
Could you, could you kindly re-explain what you meant by a, a compacted version of the class? You, you mentioned that earlier.
So where we highlight certain topics where the students may not have done so well in the PAR, because you can unpack the, the various topics of the PAR assessment, and they can hone in on those specific areas where they didn't do as well.
Is it individualized for every student?
So one of the programs is individualized, where we can hone in different areas, so the online allows an opportunity to go in deeper into some of those areas, and that's what we wanted to kind of personalize in the way, based on how your PAR scores came out.
The online will allow you to take a pre-test. If you do well on it, it just skips you to the next section, and then you can focus on the areas that you need.
Ms. Dixon?
Right, so I'm just curious, do you know who writes these tests? I mean, who makes them up?
So the PAR test was developed by a national consortium of teachers, administrators, higher education math professionals, people who lead the national math associations, and they create item banks and forms of the tests. The current MCAP test that's being formulated right now, a lot of Maryland teachers are engaged in writing items.
So teachers are involved.
Yeah, it's tremendously teacher-created, from originally, the PAR test from across the nation, the MCAP will be from across the state, because it's specific to Maryland when it's administered in the spring.
What do you think of the test? What do you think? What do you think of it?
The English, the English test, actually, the English 10 test, I think is, it, it has some, it's, it's a very rigorous test. It has some, I think flaws, that the goal is to correct them. One, it should be adaptive, so that if you can answer the first 10 questions, skip to question 11. I mean, you ought to be able to show in the first two that you can go to this point, so you don't spend as much time answering things that are relatively easy for you to do. The second is it should use some game theory. And game theory says that early success builds confidence, and you'll do better. And I, I actually was involved in the standard setting for the original English 10 PARC test, and I took the test about 10 times in a closed room with a bunch of other English teachers, and it had zero game theory in it. So it started with the most difficult, challenging reading passage, and then went to one that was much easier than one that was kind of rigorous. And so one of the things that the state superintendent said is that by the second year of the MCAP, it will use, it will be adaptive, and it will use game theory. Those are both important things. The third thing, and this is kind of heresy for an English teacher to say this, it's a little English teacher-centric. I think in the world we live to, to, that we live in today, the test needs to be more relevant to the students who are taking it and less relevant to English teachers' interests. So that's a pretty blunt assessment of what I think of the test. It is a much better test than the MSA or HSA were when they were originally conceived, because it's a much more complicated. If you do well on the PARC English 10 test, then you can probably teach English if you get a five, because it's a very rigorous assessment. And I, I understand from people that the same is true of the Algebra I test, I have not taken it.
So I wanted to say thanks for the executive summary. That was good. So now, this little binder, we send this to the state? So I think we should just send it to them right away? We're done?
We'll vote in a minute.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Can I ask a follow-up question, along the line of Ms. Dixon?
In the immersion program, since the, the students don't really take English until the fourth grade, are they tested an ELA in the third grade?
Yes.
To me, lights are on.
It's okay, yes is the answer. In dual immersion, they're working in both languages.
But I'm talking this full immersion.
In one-way immersion, they, they still take the English.
And they do very well.
Yes.
Research shows that they do just as well as their non-immersion peers, if not better.
Dr. Daca, did you have a follow-up question or?
I never had a question.
Okay.
I was so confused by these charts that I'm gonna have to have a tutorial, because I'm trying to add up the numbers of the focus group that is tested, and when you go across three, four, or five, it doesn't add up. So there's something that I'm not getting. And my other concern is the teachers that you asked about who are devising these tests, these are the same teachers that are failing our African-American and Latino kids, and I don't mean just here in this county, but this is a national exam. So do we have any influence over that? I mean, these tests are the same, they're the same difficulty for certain groups of kids.
Mrs. Smodrowski, or did somebody want to respond?
I'd be happy to respond.
When we, when we look at the MCAP, one of the requests has been that we look at more relevant, as I said earlier, it's, it's kind of English teacher-centric. And what I was saying by that is, you have what appeals to English teachers, and we need to look at more relevant material, reading passages and, and items that will relate more to our students and their lives, much the same way we reviewed our new English Language Arts curriculum, to make sure it appealed to a broad group of students that we currently serve. And so that is certainly the effort and the, the, the statement and the commitment that's been made. We'll see once the tests are administered and we have a chance to see them, if we've realized that goal or not. Because it is, it's an English teacher test, the PARC is right now, is written.
Ms. Sevens, I just wanted to clarify, Dr. Daca, the, the columns don't add up because we're missing levels one and two. We just, we, we took out levels one and two, and so there's a number missing, and so when you add it through, it's just levels three, and then we are only looking at four and five as the total that pass, and so, yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Smodrowski?
Okay, so I just want to clarify one quick point, to Mr. Timbite's point. So if I have a student and they take Algebra, you know, in sixth, seventh grade, whatever grade you want to pick, and they get a three, I as a parent am notified. And then now they, it's the end of the year, so they move on to geometry, they're in the middle, and we go to them and we say, we want to give you some recapping on the Algebra, and that doesn't cut into their regular class time schedule, it's in either like an after-school or a Saturday, or a, or group type thing, or an online.
So we contacted the parents prior to the school year starting, so they could make the decision about whether or not they wanted to have the child repeat the course, whether or not they wanted them to continue with geometry, but take a refresher, like a, like, have another course, but that's a refresher dur, during the day, the school day. Whether or not they wanted to do before-school, after-school, do a Saturday course, do an online course, but that the parent would understand that that, they would really need to be there kind of to support them. So we gave a lot of different options to the parent, and they would need to work with the school to, to help decide what they would want to do. So that's, those are all of the options we provided, and, you know, we followed up with the school for, for those options.
So you guys, sorry, I was just asking, so you guys contact at the beginning of the new year after the course has been taken?
We, we contacted them in August, end of July, August.
So after the course has been taken at the end of the year?
Yeah, after the PARC scores came back.
Okay.
But after they've already picked their next year's classes, essentially. So, so we do that for every child in every school, no matter what, what course they're taking, at which grade level, if they get a three, or below.
This was the first time.
Yeah, no, I was just, I'm just trying to clarify, just because, is it just the Algebra if you are taking it really early? Is it, is it anybody who takes Algebra?
Just seventh-grade Algebra. That was the.
This was the first.
I'm sorry, I missed that part, that's right, I was just trying to, okay.
And, and if you, if you see in the tables, I know there are tr, 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 numbers, it was 508 total students who reached level three, and then it's, I was just doing the math here, if, if you, it's a, a couple of hundred more students who were in levels one and two. So you have very few students across 40 middle schools that were in levels one and two, and it was 508 who were in level three. And so you're looking at, you know, a handful of students in each school, not hundreds. But, and, and that depends on the school, the school, how many that was.
Right. No, I appreciate that, I, I mean, I think the best way to address issues and to help our children be able to be successful is by identifying the concerns and addressing them directly and individually. So I appreciate your work on this, thank you.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yeah, so my question really revolves around the students in high school, grades nine through 12, who take Algebra. And we know that, for whatever reason, when you backmap, you know, they've gotten to ninth grade with gaps. I mean, I know we're, the next is about strategies, but are we still offering double-period Algebra in high schools, or is that not a strategy anymore? And, I mean, you know, I, these students, I mean, it's not great, I mean, the scores aren't great for high school, kids taking Algebra in high school, I mean, so they, they've gotten there, they have, probably have some gaps in their math skills before they hit high school, or they've come to us with interrupted skills.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a lot of double-period Algebra taking place anymore. I know that we are piloting a new Algebra course in a lot of our, our high schools, just to see if we can improve the, the quality of Algebra course instruction taking place in our, in our high schools. So we're getting a lot of really good feedback from our high schools right now about the, the new resource that we have in there. But we, it is an area that we are working very hard to, to improve, and, and we know that we've got a lot of work to do in terms of our professional development, and also just wanting to make sure that we are preparing, even at the middle school level, just making sure that we have, you know, really preparing our students to make sure that they have a stronger foundation, and we want to make sure that they're more prepared going into, into high school. So something we're working on.
It's been a struggle before. I mean, and, and this just shines a spotlight on the, the gap, and, you know, Algebra is so key to, I mean, college and career-ready, and, you know, I, I mean, I, I'm not sure, you know, that double-period Algebra was the be-all and end-all, that, but just, we need to have a strategy for kids who are entering in grade nine, 10, 11, wherever, whatever period of time to address the mathematic deficiencies.
So one of the things I just want to add to this is, is if you remember, the curriculum adoption piece stopped at the math eighth grade. And so part of the pilot, we have about, out of the 5,400 kids or so that did, that took the PARC as ninth graders or, or older, about 1,100 or 1,200 of them are students with disabilities at different levels. As we look at the number of students that continue to take Algebra and have concerns, that is one population that we want to hone in on in these pilots, and to look at Algebra taught in a different way. The other thing is backmapping to Math 8, and having that very tight alignment between Math 8 and the transition to Algebra I. For students who take it for the very first time, and for students who did not pass it in eighth grade and are taking it in ninth grade again, and so I think we are taking some unpacking of the data to be able to look at the, I think it's 12 site schools that we are doing the Math Algebra I pilot this year, 16? 16 schools, I'm sorry, 16 schools that are doing the Algebra I math pilot this year, because as you said, Ms. O'Neill, this is a problem that has, has been with us for a while around making sure that, you know, we, we have 85-plus students that complete their Algebra requirement before, by eighth grade, the other percentage that do not, and take it either again, or take it for the first time in ninth grade and continue on to high school, something that we, we're looking for multiple ways of how to target that, and make sure they do pass successfully.
So, I mean, just an observation, so we're talking about 538 or whatever, in seventh, seventh grade.
508, got a level three.
Who got a level three, but we're talking about 5,000 or so kids in high school, and, I mean, just the number, and we're putting a lot of effort into those kids in seventh grade. And, and, you know, for the most part, those are high flyers, but we've got a whole big gap of kids, so I, I think we need to put our, more energy into this.
Dr. Smith?
The real key is to do two things. One is what Ms. Smodrowski was saying earlier, and that's make it individualized. That really is, to know what the student needs if they get to the ninth grade without the foundational knowledge they need, is just to become much more individualized. The other key, and the more important one, is to, in pre-K grades one, K, one, two, three, four, five, six, not let students fall behind in mathematics. And, and you've all heard me talk about my son, Peter, he wasn't going to be in Algebra I by the ninth grade, before the ninth grade. He didn't complete it till the end of the 10th grade, but that, that's, but Peter is the exception, not the rule. And, and we need to understand, and when you look at these numbers, overwhelmingly, the students that we see in Algebra in the ninth, and you said it's about half of the students are ninth graders, if I remember your statistics?
Ninth graders.
Of the 5,000, about half are ninth, and the other half are spread between 10th, 11th, and a few in 12th, very few in 12th. The, the, it has to be that we've given them the foundational knowledge, and that we personalize it in a way that they can learn it if they don't reach Algebra I by eighth grade, that it's a very different experience for them. But the stronger those arithmetic skills are, which move into mathematical reasoning and mathematical thinking, and, and our goal is to implement the new curriculum and change the instructional strategies that are up there that we're talking about, so that we have really good foundational knowledge in every kid possible that's with us in elementary and middle school. That's the time to intervene and make sure. High school's not the time. The other thing I think we have to recognize is, if you're a student of color or a student in poverty, your chance of doing well in Algebra I and all subsequent upper-level math is better in this county than anywhere else in the state? It is, if you look at any major, Advanced Placement, IB, SAT, all of those things. And at the same time, that's not good enough, because there's still that disparity. So we have to recognize what our teachers do and our schools do, and then we have to keep pushing to get to higher levels of performance for all kids, especially those who historically have not had the same levels of performance, because they've not had the same levels of opportunity. The one thing I can guarantee you is, if you're not in Algebra I in the eighth grade, and you should have been, then we, we are responsible for that. MCPS, me, Nikki, Maria, Monifa, we're responsible for that.
So using these numbers that are here, I only did the first group, I did the percentages, and adding those together, it comes to something like 54% have gotten three, four, or five. So that means 46% are in one and two, and one and two is not passing?
Right.
Oh, right.
That's right.
Dismal.
Yes. And that starts in pre-K, it's sustained all the way through elementary?
Yeah, but that's the question I keep asking, what is it that we need to do that's different? We can't keep doing the same thing. We have some students that no matter how badly you teach them, they are able to score well. But we know that we have a concern about certain kinds of kids. Who's teaching those kids to the best of their ability?
Well, that, that's the purpose of the resource study, that's the purpose of the Equity Accountability Model.
Right.
But to know.
So thank you for this presentation, great comments and from my colleagues, and at this time, we, if I, I don't see any other lights, we'll go on to.
We did.
That's right, that's right. I'm ready to.
I move that we transmit this to the state.
Who to second it? All those in favor? And that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So now, we can go to the next item on the agenda. The next item, Dr. Smith?
So first, I'd like to say, Ms. Hazel, thank you very much, and to your staff, all of the people that worked very hard on this. So next, we're going to have an update on the, the system-wide boundary analysis. I was thinking about this earlier with our, our public comments, and people were referencing the boundary analysis as part of the public comments, and I thought, what we're really doing is an enrollment analysis here. Who's enrolled where? That's what we want to know. And so we have our team here today to talk about where we are in this process. We've just really, just gotten, excuse me, started since the end of August, and moving forward, and so we will turn it over to Dr. Zuckerman, Ms. McGuire, and Mr. Turner, and we want to welcome Mr. Davis today to join us, former principal of Redland Middle School, and now the director of Family Engagement, and, and the Student of Family and Student Engagement, and so, welcome, glad to see you here today.
So thank you, Dr. Smith. Before I turn it over to Ms. McGuire, just to give an update on the work that we've done since the board... since the board approved, um, the award of contract, I just wanted to highlight that the work we're about to do for the next, uh, eight months or so is, um, it, it doesn't just live with, with us. It's, this, this is a, a major community engagement effort, communication effort. Um, and we've, we've, uh, appreciated the opportunity to collaborate with colleagues initially and will continue to do so as we, as we reach out, as we solicit feedback, as we better understand, um, uh, our data and our preferences that we hear from our communities as well. So, um, I just want to highlight that and say thank you to Everett Davis, welcome, and Derek Turner for, who are all part of the, our steering committee for this project. And with that, turn it over to Essie, just to walk us through just a little bit of what we've done, where we're headed with communication engagement, and then we'll open up for questions.
Thank you. And we really do just want to provide sort of an update, um, in terms of where we are, um, in this process. Oops, excuse me. Um, and just to recap briefly, sort of where we've been, the board, um, the board's resolution was of course approved in January, and we did spend, um, a significant amount of time this spring, beginning that conversation with our community around what the project scope would be, what the scope of, uh, our request for proposals and engaging the consultants would be. Um, so we did take some time in the spring to do that, uh, and those were helpful conversations, uh, again, to sort of start that work. Um, in June, we issued the, uh, request for proposals to seek consultants, um, and spent the summer reviewing those proposals and seeing that process through. And on August 29th, the board awarded the contract, um, for this project to WXY Architecture and Urban Design. So, we immediately jumped into working with them, uh, and strengthening that relationship, um, really getting to know them and their team, and as Dr. Zuckerman said, convening our, um, inter-office, inter-departmental team. And we very much appreciate the participation of, um, a wide range of offices and folks to join and bring that internal expertise to this project. So, we had a planning retreat and we have been working with, um, the consultants to really develop the project work plan and the community engagement plan. At this point, these are really the high-level roadmaps for this work. Um, and we absolutely, um, want to provide the highlights, uh, with you here today, but we will be posting the, those documents and that information on the website, um, and beginning their, our, our engagement with our community that way to be sure that everyone, um, again, can be informed and know where we're headed as well. So, I want to go over just very briefly the, um, sort of major milestones that we have outlined from a time perspective and sort of how we're, uh, thinking to stage this work and again, at sort of this, uh, the, the macro level. We really are spending this time right now in the pre-scoping and planning of the project. Again, really working with the consultants and our team to identify what are the data sources, how are those data sources together, come together rather, um, really scoping out again, the work of the project and how we want to move this through. We're beginning to look at community engagement in sort of two distinct phases, and we'll go into a little more depth. Um, but really the first phase is about, um, community awareness, sharing information, and also information gathering. Again, kind of continuing that initial conversation with the community around what we know so far, what we anticipate to go forward to learn, and certainly to continue to receive that feedback and input, um, from the community throughout this early stage of the work. And we anticipate that being sort of our fall work with the community. At the same time, of course, the consultants will really be, uh, diving into the data analysis, doing a baseline analysis of the clusters. Again, that's really our current state, taking that sort of fresh and comprehensive look, um, at the district, at the school and cluster boundaries, um, and again, just really understanding the lay of the land of where we are. Uh, as well as doing some benchmarking and taking, um, the benefit of lessons we can learn in other jurisdictions, comparing it, of course, with our experience here. That, um, winter work will also involve, um, development of an interactive tool. Um, we're really looking to try to have, uh, sort of a, a way again, for folks to be able to engage in the work, um, of the, uh, of the boundary analysis and, uh, have a way to, to really break down that data and interact with it themselves. So, we'll be working on that with them. The project does call for an interim report to be delivered in February, and we really see that as sort of the beginning of beginning to communicate formally the data analysis and the benchmarking and some of that early work. Um, sort of an interim report, just a little bit of a touch point there. At that point, we'll be able to move into really the second phase of community engagement as well as refining our analysis and our work, um, that, uh, that comes out of the interim report, beginning to look at, um, at models, at findings, at observations, beginning to look at sort of that next phase, testing those ideas, understanding what the metrics are that are being used for comparison, and again, being able to take that work out to the community to again, continue to share information and get that feedback, uh, and input to help shape the final report. The final report, uh, is due to come back in June, uh, in keeping with the board's resolution. So, this is a visual that's hard to read, but it really does, um, yeah, I know. You don't need to read it, but it, I did just think that it was a little bit of a helpful visual in terms of the, the overlapping nature of some of this work to really meet the timeframe and again, accomplish a lot of activities in the timeframe. It's really more for the visual than it is for reading, and again, it will be online in case anyone's interested in really parsing through it. But again, just really wanted to show that again, we're moving several trains of work forward at one time to keep that work moving, keep in touch with our community, and meet the timelines, um, uh, with the resolution. So, in addition to the high-level project work plan, we also have, uh, work to develop a very, um, robust community engagement and outreach plan. And the key here is really to have multiple strategies, approaches, and tools. Um, we spent some great time with the consultants, and, uh, my colleagues can certainly expand on that, talking through, again, what are the strategies? How do we want to begin to, um, engage with our community in a wide variety of approaches and forums? We want to have, um, some large group meetings where we can share information and collect sort of large quantities of feedback. We also really want to have those smaller targeted discussions where we can have more of a focus group experience, get that more in-depth qualitative data gathering. Um, of course, inner, uh, interviews and other personal interactions, and then we're planned to have a strong online component, both for sharing information as well as again, for continuing to receive feedback, um, through surveys, Dropbox, and other, um, avenues for feedback. Again, the two phases, as I outlined briefly at the beginning, um, the first phase is really gathering additional baseline information from the community and sharing the information that we can about the baseline that we do know and the project information and plans. Um, we really want to gather, um, information on, and feedback rather, on how we can integrate the baseline of the current state into our data and cluster analysis as we go forward. The second phase is again, really going to be about sort of sharing and testing ideas, getting feedback on those ideas, and being able to share sort of the initial results and findings from the analysis that we did, and again, being able to incorporate that feedback, uh, as we move forward. So, for next steps, we really want to begin to, um, put those initial planning documents out into the public sphere. We're going to be launching a website and again, beginning those communications. Um, we'll be setting a schedule for the community meetings and of course, communicating that as broadly as possible, and of course, diving into the data analysis and benchmarking. Um, in the board's resolution, um, authorizing the boundary analysis, the board did specify, um, wanting to have a public hearing in the fall, uh, specifically in November with our community, to be able to get specific feedback again on the boundary analysis. And hopefully, um, at that point, people also will have the benefit of some of these initial documents to, uh, to, to react to. Um, and so the, um, recommendation and consultation with board staff and, and our staff working together, uh, would be for that hearing to be on November 18th, and certainly it would be very, um, it'll be very helpful to, to distinguish between the conversation about the boundary analysis and the range of CIP projects that of course, will be coming for you in the other hearings, um, just so that again, people kind of understand the, um, differences between those conversations. So, that's really our update. Again, we wanted to just sort of share that work and the initial planning work that we've done. Happy to receive questions, and again, we'll be, um, posting the, um, the more in-depth documents online.
Okay. So, I'll start, Dr. Daca, if you have any questions, did you?
Not about this.
Okay. Ms. Sebastian?
Um, I'm just wondering about the November 18th hearing, um, how we can, just a challenge to make sure that the public understands where we are, has the right information rather than misinformation, so that the, they have the opportunity to really, um, advocate, uh, on point. Just, um, observation.
Sure, I'll just add, this first phase is really about raising awareness, um, and, and correcting all the mis- misperceptions and myths out there. I think that's got to be the foundation of our work, both online and in person, because a- as we know, uh, people are, uh, inputting their own information into, uh, the, the analysis. So, uh, that will be the first foundational step.
Ms. Wolf?
Um, communication plan, do you have a written one, something that we could look at and see sort of when the dates are, where you're going, that kind of thing? That's my first question.
Uh, so, yes, we'll, we'll be, um, posting, uh, sort of the written outline, uh, the more in-depth outline of what I outlined here in the presentation, and that plan will be there. We'll be continuing to develop dates and we'll have to update the dates as we go.
Okay. Just, just a couple of, of questions, things I don't understand. On your slide, community engagement and outreach plan, you have smaller targeted focus group meetings. What does that look like? And with who?
And Mr. Davis can, can speak to this. One of the things that we've learned, and particularly as the board revised policy FAA and, uh, with respect to boundary studies and just engagement in general, it's a large community meeting may not always be the best meeting. We may not get everyone, uh, out to the meetings, and so we're proactively going into communities, um, and meeting people where they're at. And one of the things that we've learned, and you can speak a little bit to what we just did with Seneca Valley, was the importance of leveraging focus groups, smaller groups, um, where we are discussing themes and ideas that we can then take back, almost a qualitative research approach to understanding different perspectives, um, that can help inform, uh, analysis and decision-making. So, Everett can probably speak a little bit to more about what we did with Seneca.
Sure. Happy to do so. Um, we had the opportunity to work in very small, when we talk about small focus groups, say ten to fifteen, uh, parents, and we know that based on experience that they are more apt to share in a smaller group, um, more apt to have a better understanding, but also more apt to share, uh, their experiences and have a better understanding of the process. When we talk about targeted focus groups, it also includes meeting them where they are, but also includes, uh, reaching out to our community partners to help to engage those who are not necessarily as engaged in the process, those who are particularly, particularly, excuse me, uh, underrepresented, for example, and bringing them forward, uh, giving them a greater understanding of the process and helping them to advocate, uh, for the process. So, when we're talking about smaller targeted focus groups, that's what we mean, whether it be by, uh, by language, by background, by geographical area, we're just looking for a, a representative sample of our parent group.
Is that different from stakeholder interviews?
Yes, I believe those are actually more targeted, um, one-on-one individual conversations so they can, uh, get a sense of not the, the outcomes, but like who we should talk to, who we should engage with. This is one of those unique efforts that we need to try, unique tactics, um, and really getting a, a baseline of who's out there in the community, who have we engaged with, who have we missed, and how do we bring those hard-to-reach communities to the table?
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr., okay, so, Mr. Tenbite, no questions. Ms. Dixon?
So, I, I'm glad to see, um, you know, Mr. Turner here, and, uh, you too, Everett, but especially. So, um, what, what is the plan to deal with the misinformation that's out there? Because I have to tell you, uh, you know, I do read, uh, the Bethesda Beat, uh, daily and, uh, the comments that are on there. Uh, some of them are quite, um, offensive and, you know, prescribed motives to the board that we don't have, you know? So, for example, they say, "This is what they're gonna do, you know, they're gonna bust your children," all of, this is just a lie, uh, because this is an analysis, okay? And, um, but, you know, as someone who tries to act with integrity, I really resent that being put out there, and I think that maybe it would be a good idea to have some posts from you that say, you know, "This is just not, you know, what we're doing," to explain what we are engaged in right now, that no decisions have been made about any boundary changes or things like that. And, um, so, you know, it kind of reminds me of some of the things that are happening on a national level that are not true, uh, that are just said and thrown out there, you know, kind of just throw them up against the wall. But, um, wha- what you're thinking about that? Do you read those?
So, I don't read many of the comments. It's, uh, the problem is, they get about two comments into any blog post or any article, and it turns sour very quickly, because there are people who just spend their lives in comments, not reading the articles. I think the best strategy is, if there's a Bethesda Beat reporter in the room, maybe there is. They could quote verbatim, um, what you just said about what the boundary analysis is in the center of their article, because I think that's the best way to enforce, um, the, the message of, of what's actually happening with your work.
Okay. I think we have to have a further conversation about this, because, you know, this is a, it's sort of a daily drumbeat, uh, where, you know, anything that comes up about, you know, the boundary analysis, um, you know, and it's the same posts all the time. And, um, and I don't think it's helpful. I really don't. Um, you know, it's spreading misinformation and, um, and frankly, it's not right.
And, and I, I understand. I, I think, um, on a more complex note, trying to respond to all comments is, is a, is a difficult, uh, effort, but I think we can be more strategic about the, the core of the article where, where most people spend their time. Um, fewer and fewer people are spending their time in the comments. So, the, the more we can stack the, um, the base of the article with the facts, so that those who read it and those who are exploring the issue can have that ahead of them, uh, the better off we are.
But it's the same post, I'm sorry. It's the same post every day. You will become very familiar with the people who are posting, um, you know, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Smudrowski?
So, I just want to say, start off by saying, I agree. I, but I think we should be doing that a little bit more on Facebook and everything else too, but that's a communications committee topic that we've already slightly touched on, and hopefully we'll delve into further. But, um, but yeah, there's so much misinformation, and to your point, I tried very, very hard with the Washington Post to make sure that it was very clear, this is not a boundary study, but that it's a boundary analysis and that it's a review. Um, I'm not really sure that that goes, that people take, people take away what they want to take away anyways, which is part of why I feel like it's important to address what they then write or, um, or what other people are putting out there, because there is a lot of miscommunication. And so I do hope that we will continue to let people know what we're doing and advocate for correctness.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes, I agree with Ms. Dixon. I mean, there's a great deal of misinformation out there, and I've received some, some rather vitriolic emails that were totally off the wall, not based on fact, uh, with spreading rumors of what is the boundary analysis is not about, and not correct information. But, on the issue of information and baseline data and informant cluster analysis, you know, last year when Ananya first raised this, you know, and she was on a faster track of doing the boundary analysis, one of the most persuasive letters that we had was from the Walter Johnson Cluster. You know, MGT had just done their initial reinterpretation of how we do our projections or, and so, you know, an argument to begin the process this fall was that we would have accurate information come September 30 about whether the new MGT projections were correct. Well, for whatever reason, we have twenty-seven hundred more students this fall than we were projected to have.
Well, not twenty-seven hundred more than we were projected, we have about sixteen hundred more than we were projected, right?
Sixteen hundred. And we, we grew.
Yeah, we figured, yeah, we figured you'd get about eleven or twelve hundred.
Yeah. So, we grew sixteen hundred more, you know, than the initial eleven hundred. But projecting then out long-term, you know, how, are the MGT, uh, is that a projection, are those projections accurate? Do we know, is this going to be the new trend? Is, and we're gonna give the, um, you know, the consultant the data by cluster, and I know that there are some clusters that have, you know, had higher enrollment, and it's not evenly distributed across all of our clusters. So, I just, how are we gonna make sure that they have accurate data, not just today, but for projection into the future?
Dr. Smith?
We just had this discussion yesterday, actually, at length, as we are continuing to work on the CIP submission to you at the, that will become to you at the third week of October. And one of the things I've asked the Office of Shared Accountability to do is do a, all of last year and the first three months of this year, analysis of when students came in. And I think it's going to be very interesting for the board and the community and everyone else. We had a very, very large influx of students right before this year started, July, August, and into early September. And I don't think MGT, a demographer, anybody could anticipate. And if that's going to become the typical way that we gain students, then we're going to have to rethink what we do around this. I've also asked the team, one of the things they will bring to you in the CIP submission is, what was the variability in the initial MGT study? And what do we see in the actuals this year? So we were looking yesterday at actuals and projections, so from them. So all of that will be a part of this conversation and has to be. But it does, it does concern me that we were getting 2,500 students a year in a more typical or traditional fashion of gaining students. Then we dropped to, you know, 1,000 last year, 1,100 total gain last year, net gain. And then this year, where we spiked back up so considerably. And I think that's going to require that we continue to look at things differently and how this is evolving for our community and our school system. I also think, since I have my mic light on, I'll say, I think we ought to be very targeted between now and the CIP hearings and this boundary analysis hearing, and that we send information out to the people who typically testify, to the organizations that typically testify, to the people who sign up to testify, to advocacy organizations and community associations across the county. And so that essentially, no one can say, well, we didn't know. They might say, we don't believe you, or we disagree, but no one ought to be able to say, we didn't know, we didn't get anything. I think we should, on multiple occasions, blanket our community with accurate information about the analysis. We did that last spring, and we were able to get people to kind of take a breath, and we need to do it now as we enter the CIP season in the coming weeks, and we've talked about that too, as one of our strategies.
But yes, it does have, it has implications for obviously, the baseline data in the boundary analysis. It has huge implications in our capital budget, and it even has implications, you know, the folks testifying about portables.
Absolutely.
Run the county in the safety of portables. It has implications on all of that. But it is a very real concern that the PTAs had expressed to us before we embarked on this, and it just is driven home because of the increase.
Right.
Okay. Ms. Sebastian.
Just wanted to clarify, you said there were 1,600 new, not expected?
Over projections. Yeah. We projected, yeah. We project, you know, every fall as part of the CIP and as part of the operating budget, we project what our next year's enrollment will be. CIPs is over six years of projections, operating is one year at a time. And then, so last year, we expected, well, if it dropped to 1,000, 1,200, and the demographers were looking at everything, we thought, well, we'll probably get about that number, maybe a few more next fall, and it actually is significantly more. And I haven't seen the final breakdown as of October 1st, but it's significantly more, 14 to 1,600 more students than we expected this year, the vast majority of them coming in to us during the summer before school started.
And of the 1,600, do you know how many came through the internationals?
The majority of them did, and we'll be sending that to the board and making that part of public information.
So I wanted to make that point, because how can you project that, right? Those are the crisis at the border.
That's the challenge, exactly.
Right. And so, not only does it have implications for the things that Mrs. O'Neil mentioned, but it also has implications in terms of curriculum, support services, these many come with instruction.
Instruction.
Instruction. Just wanted to really emphasize that. I'm trying anyway.
Thank you. So saying no other lights, we want to thank you all for giving us this update on the boundary analysis.
We need to take action on the resolution.
So if I move the resolution, there's a green sheet that we hold a hearing on the boundary analysis on November 18th.
Second.
It's been moved to second. It all goes in favor? And that is unanimous. Okay. So at this time, we are at item 13 on our agenda, items of information only, so take note of that. Moving to item 14, Board of Education items, if we can move items 14.1 and 14.3.
Move in block.
Block.
Seconds.
It's been moved to second. It all goes in favor? And that is unanimous. At this time, we're at item 14.4, and Mr. Tenbite, if you can address the new business item?
Sure. This is a resolution that I brought forward at the last meeting.
We tabled it, because Ms. Sebastian was not here.
Yeah.
So now, this time, if we can.
Hold on, I'm just going to get a coffee.
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so just wanted to mention from the last board meeting, where this is a resolution that I hope to, well, let me get straight into it. So the subject is new business, awarding academic credit for participation in Montgomery County Public High School's Interscholastic Athletic Program. Whereas, the Board of Education has articulated a longstanding commitment to foster student engagement through rigorous and relevant curriculum, engaging instruction, a variety of programs, and an array of extracurricular activities. And whereas, the Board of Education recognizes the interscholastic athletic support, the goals of ensuring that every student will have academic, creative, problem-solving, and social-emotional skills to be successful in college and career. And whereas the Montgomery, and whereas Montgomery County Public Schools has launched a new initiative, BeWell 365, to address the physical, social, and psychological well-being of all students, which research has demonstrated helps support academic growth and lifelong personal and career success. And whereas, the Code of Maryland Regulations, COMR 13A.04.13, Physical Education Program, adopted by the Maryland State Board of Education on October 29th, 1986, requires each local school system to provide an instructional program in physical education, and requires high school students to complete one-half credit in physical education for graduation. And whereas, the Board of Education requires high school students to complete an additional one-half credit of in-school physical education for graduation. And whereas, given the myriad of engaging, enriching, and rigorous courses available, Montgomery County High School students often experience difficulty finding space in their schedules for all desired courses in the areas of academic interests, and could use one-half credit physical education required by the Montgomery County Public Schools to explore these interests. And whereas, the Superintendent of Schools is charged with reviewing, modifying, and revising curriculum and graduation requirements, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education direct the Superintendent of Schools to explore opportunities for curriculum changes and/or changes to the high school graduation requirements. That provides Montgomery County Public School students with the option to earn academic credit for participation in Montgomery County Public High School's Interscholastic Athletic Programs, with specific consideration regarding whether the additional one-half physical education credit required by Montgomery County Public Schools for graduation could be satisfied by participation in such programs. And be it further resolved that the Superintendent of Schools make recommendations to the Board of Education by February 2020.
Second.
Okay. It's moved to seconded, discussion? None? Okay. I just want to make sure.
I actually wanted to comment about it. You know, I hope that the Superintendent will benchmark with other districts. It would be interesting to see who requires an additional semester of PE. But also, I wanted to comment, some of us were at the May banquet Thursday night when Dr. Nancy Grasnick received an award from the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, and she spoke about Carnegie credits, and she specifically cited about PE and Frederick High School, because Frederick High School had a very high dropout, low graduation rate, and she said they, one of the things that they had looked at even was PE credit. And she specifically cited an Irish step dancer, who is an international winner in Irish step dancing, who competes, who practices five days a week. And I just, as she was speaking Thursday evening, I was thinking of your new business item. And, you know, I think that, you know, we want our students to be healthy and active, and someone said to me the other day, you know, is this going to be like, now you can get English credit for being in a book club? And no, not exactly. And I do hope that we will benchmark, but Dr. Grasnick cited Frederick, and so it would be interesting if in other jurisdictions, you know, in Maryland or Fairfax County, are there programs like this for athletes and for us to see those benchmarks?
Absolutely. I'm going to research that personally.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes, I would also be interested in knowing what the impact would be in terms of staffing and, you know, physical education teachers, because it would seem that, at least off the top of my head, that, you know, that would mean that we would need less teachers. And, you know, I do have a concern about that. You know, I do think that, you know, PE is very important, and also the health piece of that, which is another .5. I think it's 1.5. We did receive a letter from Susan Loftus, who is a physical education teacher on the Board of Ed Mail. I was just looking for it, but I think it's, you know, been moved off the, you know, my little screen here, however that works. I don't know. But, yeah. So that, I think, would be something that we should look at as well as we move forward with it.
I agree. I was going to ask the same question. So with that taken into consideration, there's been a motion in the second, all in favor of moving it forward for the Superintendent to look into? And that is unanimous. Okay. At this time, I would ask board members, are there any other new business items that you would like to share?
No, I don't exactly have a new business item, but I did forget that at the church, Goshen Church, the president of Bowie State was the keynote speaker, and she met Lance Dempsey for, not Lance, Lance, oh wow, Human Resources's Lance. Oh, it is Dempsey. Okay. Oh, I was thinking of Mary, and thought I had it wrong, but Lance Dempsey for the first time. So they're going to be working on issues around recruitment, because as we've said before, that we don't have enough recruitment for African-Americans and Latinos, so they're going to work together on that, and I'm very happy about that. And I forgot to mention Everett Davis. He sent me the whole list of people who were present at that event.
Okay, very good. So at this time, we are moving to item 15, which is for informational purposes only, and I would like to get a motion to adjourn.
I have adjourned. Second.
Been moved to seconded. All those in favor? And that is unanimous.